This is Duluth Public Schools ISB 709. It is Tuesday, no, it is Thursday, September 7th, and it is 4:35. This is our monthly committee of the whole meeting. And as Assistant Superintendent Bonds and Chair Wolfall agree every time we open this meeting, that important presentations happen at our committee of the whole meeting. In my opinion, it's really where most of the incredible things, challenges, as well as the successes are discussed, questioned, shared, educated, informed at our committee of the whole meeting. And tonight's meeting is no different. So I will turn it over to Clerk Zadelski to take the role.
Member Lockwood.
Here.
Member Wolfall.
Here.
And here, Member Samuel.
Here.
And Member Kirby is excused, Member Oswald is excused, and Member Jerky is excused as well. Superintendent Magus.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zoom.
Present.
And then we'll have the Board Secretary Picat. Yeah, last but not least.
Yeah.
Thank you. And just as an overview, because it doesn't happen very often, but every now and then, board members have conflicts, health concerns, a variety of different things. And, you know, we have to give grace and understanding to, that's what we love about our technology. We know that our meetings are recorded, and they are put up on our YouTube site. I believe I get most of the hits off of our YouTube site because I'm always listening again, you know, reflecting back on meetings. But our community and our board members are able to then, you know, watch our meetings. And again, then we'll come back at our school board meeting, our regular school board meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's September 19.
Yep.
And that's another opportunity. We digest these committee meetings again at our school board meeting. So you will see the policy report. You will see the committee of the whole report. You will see the HR business report again, reflected on our school board meeting. For even more questions or, you know, clarifications. In the next week and a half, when we look at all the information that came out of policy today, comes out of the committee of the whole now, and then next week, our HR business gives us just another opportunity to respond yet again. So at this point, I turn over our committee of the whole meeting to Assistant Superintendent Bonds, who really does work with board members to set the agenda. And so on tonight's committee of the whole meeting, we're going to review the unity in the community. We have supporting every student. We have a kindergarten task force report. We have a booster call updates and information. We have our recruiting and retaining our staff and improving systems. And we also are going to review our student performance data. So that are five really important topics. So let's get started with an important meeting. So Assistant Superintendent Bonds, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Wolfall, and good evening, everyone. The first item for discussion is just informational. I want to discuss the start of the school year. And I know Superintendent wanted to kick us off with some information, and I'll provide some additional information after that. Superintendent Magus.
Sure. I know I just wanted to say that we've had a very positive start to the school year. We've had many, many, I've been to all of the schools, some schools more than once. And seeing the positive energy in our schools is just such a positive thing. Listening to the comments, seeing the cute little children going to class and the guidance that they get from their teachers. And I just remember in one of the classes, this teacher was working with her students, and she was guiding them along. And she said, "Now, everybody stay close, because if I lose one of you, it's going to break my heart." And I just thought, how cute that was. They were just little kids following behind the teacher. We also have older students who are in their various classes and in different places. I saw middle school students that were just thrilled to see their friends and be in classes and go from place to place, talking about what teachers they have. And really, in our high schools, very similar. Just really engage students, really positive start to the school year that way. Also seeing the staff and the hard work that goes into preparing for the school year. Thinking about the work of our food service workers, of our bus drivers, of our bus helpers, our hair professionals, our maintenance folks, print shops. So many people that you don't necessarily think of right away when you think of a school, that really live their heart in events. And I know too, at the beginning of the school year, there's always bumps in the road. And we had a bump in the road, some things related to our transportation software and some staffing pieces that we worked through. But really, when I looked at how many people patted their shoulder into helping with that, many, many people from many different departments and transportation department in general worked countless hours. We had people here till 11 o'clock at night and back again at 3:00 in the morning, working from home or working here to resolve those issues. And we've pretty much taken care of the vast, vast majority of those issues and everything's back in place. So we started with our, most of our students came on Tuesday. That was a great start to the year. But then our kindergartners, our littlest learners, or almost littlest learners, started today. And then we will have our head start and the early childhood starting next week. So just a really big thank you to all people looking over here at many of our curriculum people and our directors and our elementary education and early childhood and special education. So many people that have been working all summer long for this event because we're so excited and thrilled to have our students with us. When we think about, this is the first year that we're rolling forward with our strategic plan with those three areas of supporting every student, advancing equity, and improving systems. I see that in the work that's being done, as well as trying to meet the desired daily experiences of our main groups, our students, and our staff, and our families. So I'm really proud of the district, and I'm very thrilled to be superintendent here. And again, I think when we make a mistake, we acknowledge it, and we fail forward, and we learn from it. So it's been a great start to the school year, and I couldn't be more proud of our team. But we have, one of the big events that we had was something that actually Assistant Superintendent Bonds, when he thought of it a couple of years ago, I thought it was a philanthropy. And I thought it would be, he said, "Let's have a huge event. Maybe we can have it down at Bayfront, and we can just have all these people come together and celebrate unity in our community." I thought, "That sounds really good, but how are we going to pull all this off?" And I remember last year and this year too, Mr. Bonds, you know, running from place to place, all getting along with trucks. And last year, we do all this, we had a van picking up things at Sam's Club. Not just Anthony, but the whole team was working incredibly hard to put this together. And last year, we had over 4,000 people at the event. This year, I'm sure we had even more. But we also had $38,000 worth of backpacks and school supplies that were donated. We had haircuts, we had so many different, we had, I believe, 84 different booths from people. So it was just a great event, and we have a video to showcase that. Mr. Bonds, you want to share anything else?
No, I'll share after the video.
Thanks.
Thank you. It just gives you a little glimpse of the event. And that, for me, was the beginning of the school year because it was an opportunity to just bring the entire community together. And I want to thank the entire team for all the efforts for helping to support, making it a successful event, a successful event. And I wanted to thank those individuals. I would also thank our community partners for stepping up and providing resources and opportunities for kids. And so it was a really exceptional day in my mind, and it started off our school year. After that, we quickly moved into a lot of training and support for our staff. Our staff started returning slowly but surely. I was really impressed, and they did a thorough job of just getting staff trained. And probably really great opportunities to just get ready for the school year. And of course, it's also a chance for our staff to get the classrooms ready, get the builders ready. And I will share a thing that John has already hit on, but I was really excited about the beginning of the school year with our students. One of the things I really enjoy the most is going into classrooms. This year, I went from everything from being the governor to the president. I was the mayor, you know, because students, they don't know who you are. They just see you walking around and just try to guess who you are. And so it's just really nice to them. But one of the things that touched me the most is when students you don't even know, for the first time, run up to you and give you a hug just out of the blue. And that's what happened this year on the first day with a first grader. Just out of the blue, didn't know the young fellow, but he just came and gave me a hug. And of course, I accepted it, and we all wanted to sat back down. So those are the kind of things that really make the job enjoyable, really says a lot about our students in this community. So again, I want to thank all of our staff for everything they do and everything they did to make the start of the year great for our students. I will stop there because there's a robust agenda ahead of us, and we'll make sure we have time for that. Questions before I move on, or anything else?
I just have to. We do have a little. I know, I just really want to applaud again all of the staff that are here and the many people that were involved in the unity in the schools. And I just really wanted to touch on that. And, you know, a beautiful community event. And I know, just being out in my own neighborhood, the last few days as the school has started, just heard people who had attended it as well. And so just a huge thank you. I was bragging about you earlier today, Anthony, for the work that you've been doing in our school district. And this is just one example. So thank you for that event.
Thank you. But then, we will move to our second item, which is supporting every student kindergarten task force. We have individuals here who will do a presentation. I'll bring up our chair as well.
Yes.
Elementary Director, Mrs. Sparks. She is going to join the table, as will as some others. Is that one of them?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you, Simone.
You're welcome.
With her, we have Sally White. Can you imagine herself?
I'm trying to kinder her there.
This is her.
I thought I'd let her run the presentation, and she has. I'll start introducing myself. So my name is Sally White. I am the K-12 Student Achievement Coordinator. That is a new position that I'm taking this year, a new role in the district. I support a lot of the instruction and curriculum and instruction as well. Thank you. And prior to that, I was one of the Digital Innovation Coordinators. So this is my third year as kind of the district level. And then prior to that, I was a K-1 teacher for about 10 years. So kindergarten is very new, and you're being excited to talk to you guys about this.
We're excited.
And I am Brenda Sparks. I'm the Director of Elementary Education and really thankful that Sally's a part of our team, especially when we're talking about kindergarten, because she was kindergarten teacher. So our help has just been invaluable. And then.
We have boots on the ground.
I am Melissa Burman, and I teach kindergarten at the elementary. And this is Lucy, and she is my kindergartner. She can take a little walk tonight.
All right. Who's going to be advancing it?
Mine.
Okay, there you go. All right, so kindergarten task force. So we just want to explain a little bit of the why. Really, we based it off data and historical trends. The outcomes that we see in kindergarten in Duluth Public Schools aren't where we want them to be. And so we are responding by getting a group of teachers together with Sally and, you know, trying to solve these problems. So we're evaluating the systems. What are we doing in kindergarten that's going well? What are we doing that can use some improvement to give us better outcomes for our youngest learners? Advancing equity, of course. We need to give kindergarten students what they need to be successful in school. Right now, or in the recent past, maybe we haven't been doing that. So we're looking at those systems and getting the, you know, better developmental needs in kindergarten. And then we just love the core values. So we kind of try to put them everywhere. So thank you very much for the core values.
Thank you.
And we really reflect most of what we've got, and I do every day, right? So go ahead, you can advance it. Okay, so this is a very, has a lot of information on it, but we can know anything about, you know, like color. And color tells a story. So why kindergarten task force? As I said, we've been very data-driven about this. We looked at the outcomes both post-COVID, which is in the light peach color, those first two rows, and pre-COVID, which is the dark orange of the last three rows. And really looked at what are those outcomes? I'm sorry, I've got to stand up for a second, just so I can show you something. So all these pink boxes on here, so you just have to look at the pink, the yellow, or the green. All the pink boxes represent our sites and the years where we have less kids proficient, meeting benchmarks at the end of kindergarten, and we do at the beginning of kindergarten. So we start with kids being this percent proficient at kindergarten and meeting benchmarks. And then at the end of kindergarten, we lose kids. They don't meet benchmarks at the end of kindergarten. And do the benchmarks change? So they get more rigorous. Okay, okay, okay. Because we're teaching kids. I got you. And it's a nationally normed test, so it's against other kids with the same standards. So it's like apples to apples. And so that's concerning when you look pre-COVID, post-COVID, and then across our sites. It doesn't really matter where you go to school. It doesn't matter what teacher they have. So and then the green, we grew kids in kindergarten. The yellow, they stayed staken. So when you look at this, and you look across the district as a whole, you need to see kind of what the outcomes we've been experiencing. And when you look at this, you have to do something. And so that's where we came up with this kindergarten task force. And if you want more information on that, I can go over it. But basically, that's the why behind the data and the piece of it. And so what that tells me, the story tells me is that this is a systems problem, it's not a teacher problem. Is it the resources? Is it developmentally appropriate? Do we have the right framework? There's so many questions. So that's why we brought teachers in to help us solve this problem. Yeah. All right. So again, why kindergarten task force? We have a P3 leadership team, and we look at all kinds of things, especially that pre-K to kindergarten transition is what we have been looking at. So when we brought this data to that team, you know, what are we doing prior to kindergarten, that transition, and then as we progress through kindergarten? We were really thinking about, you know, what are those things you do in pre-K? And then we, you know, immediately stopped, and how does that transition go? And then really looked at our current practice, asked ourselves, is it matching the needs of our youngest learners? The answer's no. And so we did, last spring, we did kindergarten, where our young learners blew them through, which is really wonderful. And it was so much fun. And Elise actually, she presented. No, not Elise, Melissa. Wait.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're learning from class. No. I'm learning from her.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so embarrassed.
I'll take a break. That wasn't me.
Anyway. So anyway, we had one of our kindergarten teachers at Laura Mapp. She's on Elise. She presented, did a beautiful job with Becky Bemash, and we really talked a lot about what is developmentally appropriate for that framework and that progression of learning? And how do you integrate the joy of learning into kindergarten through playful learning? And so we did a lot of learning about that. And now we're going to be integrating a lot of those practices into kindergarten. We'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. And then, of course, our new elementary schedule is really giving a lot of structure and consistency to our kindergarten classrooms, and just giving us a chance to reimagine what that day looks like and kind of designing that. So and that we also did a, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in the next presentation, but we did new frameworks, unliteracy frameworks for K-1 and 2. So we're implementing that in the kindergarten classrooms this year. And so there's a lot of things that we're doing, and there's a lot of whys behind it. So we just wanted to let you know how we came to this juncture.
A big piece of it is that advancing equity piece. And there's a quote out there that comes directly from the Department of Education's website about how kindergarten plays a huge piece in educational equity. I'm going to read it because I think it's really powerful. I read it as kindergarten task force when we started. "Kindergarten offers access to opportunities for all children and families, including developmentally appropriate, evidence-based instruction and programming, interaction with similar age years and meal services, transportation and school programs." And so I think just recognizing that, as Brenda said, we know our kindergartners are going to be with us for many, many, many years. And we want to make sure that we're setting a really great, solid foundation for their education experience in Duluth Public Schools. So in one of our first meetings as a task force, we did a lot of shared learning. We looked at a lot of research around playful learning, around what is best practice in kindergarten. Had a lot of great conversations. We really dug into those whys that we've shared with you as well, with the teachers. And as a team, we created our kindergarten vision statement. I'm really proud of this. I think the teachers are as well. I think it really encapsulates what we would like to see in kindergarten in Duluth Public Schools look like. In Duluth Public Schools, every kindergartner, every day, will be welcomed into a safe and supportive space where they are academically challenged with developmentally appropriate, joyful, and playful learning experiences. Students are empowered to discover their creativity and curiosity to foster a foundation of lifelong learning. Another piece of the work we've been doing as a group is having conversations around what kindergarten will really look like when you get down to the nitty-gritty across our schools, right, in the elementarys. And we want to make sure that no matter where our child is going to school, they're having some common shared experiences. And so part of that conversation was looking, as Brenda said, at our literacy framework, knowing that literacy is one of our focuses this year as well. And then, again, looking at what is developmentally appropriate. Well, we know that play is incredibly important for early childhood development. And we felt as district leaders and as kindergarten teachers, that's been missing a lot in the last decade in kindergartens, not just in Duluth, but across the country. And we know through research that it's incredibly important for students, for kindergartners, for their learning. And so we had a lot of conversation around what playful learning could look like in our kindergarten classrooms. So this doesn't mean that kids are not going to be learning. It means we are finding ways to teach our children that is developmentally appropriate to them. And so we've created some common language around our daily instructional blocks. Discovery labs, this is our small group, open-ended activities. There's more freedom for discovering their learning through student choices and with materials and through exploration. And then learning labs. Some of you might have in the past, or these could be called centers or small group time. Learning labs is during core math and literacy block activities. It is small group, it is grade-level content, and it's standards-aligned, and it's content-focused. The great thing about this is Brenda and I have had a lot of conversations mainly because common language across all of our schools and all of our grade levels, because many times we'll be in leadership meetings or meeting with teachers, and we're using different terms. We're kind of the same thing, but we don't have that shared definition or label for what it is. And so as we've been rolling out this new literacy framework to all our grades in the elementarys, we've been sharing the term "learning labs" with them. And so we are really excited about that being kind of a common understanding of what that time is in a student's day in Duluth Public Schools.
Yes, so if you hear "learning labs" now, that will reference this. And kindergarten really started it, and so that now is going to trickle down through grade 5. And so we're pretty excited about that.
And then the last kind of time of day we had a great conversation around is what "win time" is. Again, I think site-to-site, that's been very different over the last years. And I think, you know, as we have this repetitions together and just having a conversation, we really started to like tease out what does that need to look like for students? Does research show us that need to look like? And what do we know as educators as best practice? And so a definition we came to as a team, a time for interventions and services, enrichment and remediation, full group and or smaller construction. So that was kind of some of our work we've been starting with the kindergarten task force.
Excellent.
Can I ask a question about win? So it's, I'm kind of surprised, as a retired teacher, I know a win was in the high schools. So in kindergarten, during win, it's the same thing, students, right? They're not finding other, they're not regrouped in your kindergarten sections for win. Same students you've had all day.
Well, I can speak up. Yeah, it differs by site, and that's kind of why we came together, because we need to bring it in. So it's similar. So like at Lakewood last year, we would look, because we had this split at Lakewood last year, too. It was a little bit different. So we had to look at all of the first graders and all of the kindergartners together, because we have that K-1 split. And we would split the three. We would put them all together and look at them academically, not based on who was a kindergartner in Mrs. Burman's class or who was a first grader in Mrs. Welch's class. We would look at what they needed at that time. So I might have had a high kindergartner in a group with low first graders in a different classroom. I might have had a low first grader in my classroom getting what they needed at a lower instruction level. So we did and grouped that like that, yes.
Yeah, and win can vary depending on the kids sitting in your classrooms today. Do you have a higher cohort of kids or a lower? And then how much time you spend on win? Is that remediation piece? Interventionists usually come to the classrooms at that time. So the classroom teacher is an interventionist, if you will, at that time. The interventionist comes, it can be math, reading. It's what your kids need. And so it's really based on data, and that really drives how you conduct win.
And another piece of defining win as well was, we wanted to make sure, research shows us that it is detrimental for students to pull out of core instruction. And what we wanted to make sure was not happening was that that centers time, those learning lab times, that students are going to pull out of those times for interventionists. Instead, we wanted to make it very clear that win time is really when interventionists can be pulling students for those more tailored interventions. So it was kind of a matter of defining as well. So part of this work we've been doing is we put a proposal forward, and it was approved by the district to make a purchase of resources to support that integration of playful learning. And so as a kindergarten task force, we put forward this list of resources, different play resources, sensory, all sorts of different developmentally appropriate toys and tools for kindergartners. And this is kind of to put us onto the next steps, which is really creating more of a scope and sequence of how we can integrate play and integrate it with our language arts and our social studies and our science. And so our next steps moving forward is we broke into some subcommittees. One team is working on, or the discovery lab, what that will look like in kindergarten across the district, resources. And then the other team will be working on those learning labs and creating more ties to our curriculum through that. And the great part is now we know that all of our classrooms have those resources, and it's not, well, this teacher's been teaching for 30 years, so they have all this great, all these great tools for their kindergartners. Well, this teacher is brand new, and they don't have anything. So now we know we have that common shared pool of resources for all of our sites in our classrooms. So it's just a wonderful first step.
Anything else, Melissa? Want to add or call this impact community?
I am just very excited to look, because I can remember now the kindergartner in the memories I have, and not only my invested, but I'm more invested now in the district. But just to bring back that creativity, the chance for them to foster their imagination with, like,[1768.33] with, like, so my husband built me this stand, and right now it's my market, so they get to go to the supermarket, buy their groceries, and do their money. And next month, that might change into the vet. So just bringing in that creative, creativity and socialization, like letting them play together and learn from one another. How one another might play is different from somebody else, so learning, learning from each other. So I'm excited to, to see all that happen and give them a chance to do that.
Questions?
I just want to say that I commend the work that's being done. When I, when I look at the work being done at usual levels, when I look at the work being done on the, the work soon to be done on the high school schedule and the work being done on the middle school schedule, but we are rolling out this year with our elementary schedule, and seeing how this fits with, with that is really incredible. Also thinking about some things we hear about the REDACT and early literacy, how do you see early literacy efforts meeting cohesively with this work?
I'll just bring in my little example right now of my supermarkets. Like, I have shopping lists, so they can look at a shopping list, and they can write on the shopping list with a whiteboard marker, so they're copying that writing, and they might, I might go over there with them and like, okay, this says apple, let's write apple that you need. So I can have it be direct in a way with it being indirect as well. So just, and then tying those outside life skills into the classroom too, in a fun and playful, playful way that you might not experience, making money out of cash register. Who would have thought that would be so fun? So that's my, the way I see it as far as, because you're looking at reading. I also brought in Super One coupon books, so they can go coupon shopping, buying a good deal at my supermarket, so you know. For the shoppers, yeah, they can teach them, yeah.
This is, this is wonderful. I love kindergarten rooms myself, it's where I love spending time with my, my folk kids. But how are we helping to educate, not educate, but inform families on some of the different ways that we're introducing learning? You know, I think, like you've said, we, we, teachers have done a lot of different things all across the district, and so it's just becoming more consistent with what they're doing. And so what are some of the ways you see that being kind of rolled out with families?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So, great question. And we've kind of started wrestling with it a little bit as a team. So I think for folks who maybe their first experience with kindergarten was their own experience or having a brand-new kindergarten, you don't really know what to expect from kindergarten. And I think as we're moving this out from just our task force to all of our kindergarten teachers, and, you know, we don't have an exact, we know the resources are coming, we order those, but we, we have, we're building out these skill sequences and that pieces. But I think as this is becoming district-wide, and we're giving the training to all of our kindergarten teachers, messaging parents, just giving them that background, and why are we doing this, and why does it look like this, and how are they learning through play? And that kind of research will be really important, so, you know, through our different forms of communication with families, I think having updates around this will be really valuable as well.
Thank you.
I would add, it's not something we're just throwing out there by any means, like, it's, some of us will go, let's get this done now, now, now. And like Sally said, it's like, if we want to do something right, we are going to take the time, we're going to invest it, and we're going to look at it deeper, and we're slowly going to, so it's not something that's just happening overnight by any means. Like, for me, I just feel like now I have a little bit more freedom right now to do a little bit more of that before we fully implement it.
Mayra Sodowsky?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I know our district is putting different, like, place gates at different schools, how those place gates, if and how they intersect with this new kind of philosophy of teaching kindergartners.
That outdoor play that I think is specifically, Sally knows better, it's specifically for preschool.
It's specifically for preschool, so during the days it's used by our preschool. But one of the things we're investing in is kind of an outdoor play kitchen for students, which obviously could be used for first graders and third graders as well, which will be exciting, because, I mean, I know my own mother loves those kind of place gates, and I'm sure our kindergartners will be excited to have a pretend kitchen, make one, I guess.
Joel?
Just a question on funding, is, did our legislature give us some extra money for our earliest learners? I, I'm wondering.
Yes, we did get a small, Head Start did too, so there was some increased funding as well.
Great. Because all, all of this, all of the work and all of the, you know, redefining and doing better and newer, it always has a price tag too. So I'm glad that we're, you know, getting some extra dollars from the legislature, that they see the need for the earliest learners, and that's where we really need to capture them. So with your excitement and your energy and your expertise, you know, I'm excited for the year.
And I also want to add, and also ESAR funds will be used to support some of the resources that move purchases. So not only do the state give us additional dollars, but we also are using ESAR, remaining ESAR funds to make these necessary purchases. If you go back to the Ten Minnesota Commitment to Equity, one of the things they talk about is follow the money. It also talks about invest early, and so that's what we're doing. We're making sure we make the necessary investments in our youngest, some of our youngest learners, and making sure that they have the resources they need to have really great experiences. And so it was really nice to meet with the team, I don't know, a few weeks ago, to talk about the plan that they had in mind and the needs and, you know, right away, and let's get it, let's make those necessary purchases, because teachers need resources and students need those experiences. So thank you to the team.
Oh, yeah, I just have one more quick question. I really liked learning about the kindergarten and just the collaboration between pre-K and K-5 programs, that's great. I, I kind of just have an extra question. How do you, and if you don't have the answer, that's fine, but students that may be not in our, you know, EC719 pre-K programs, how, how will we connect with those learners to try to onboard them as they're, you know, coming into kindergarten? Just a thought that popped in, and that's probably a little challenging, so.
No, it's very challenging, and that is part of the P3 leadership work, and actually Sally has joined our work now, thankfully, because that's her wheelhouse. And so that's part of our conversation, is capturing all of the Duluth kindergartners in their preschools or wherever they are during the day when they're four, thirty-five, and then how can we connect with them, assess their learning potentially, and have that transition into kindergarten be seamless? So that, that's part of our conversation. We don't, we don't have an answer for you yet, but we'll work on it.
No, that's okay. I know a lot of our staff do such a great job, our pre-K staff and ECFP getting out into, into the community and making those partnerships, so.
And that was actually what I was going to call on.
Sherry's here too. She works, she works with us.
They do an awesome job. I know when I talked to her and at Laura Harper, I threw a conversation with our preschool teachers, they would let me know, like, oh, that's, that child went to, you know, this outside preschool program, they'd be happy to talk to you if you wanted to know something. So our, our early childhood staff is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad to, you know, glad to share that, because when I say invest early, it's some of our youngest learners, because it is a focus of our preschool as well. So they are committed and they are dedicated to make sure we make those necessary outreachs, especially for marginalized communities or those students and families who have not taken advantage of all the offerings. They're committed to doing so, and they're going to continue to make goals, to strive to include more and more of those families, and to make sure that all those opportunities that we are talking about start even as early as three, four, before they hit kindergarten. So I want to thank them and all the efforts, as well as ECFP, because there's a lot of students with special needs, and they're working really hard to make sure those students have great experiences and are prepared for kindergarten as well.
Well, I'm just going to finish up. I was a kindergarten teacher, so, you know, I, I know this realm. I've worked in the primary grades for a long time, and so I really, really feel as though the work that we do in kindergarten, it feeds even our graduation rates. And so the better we can do a K-1, two, it takes investment, it takes time to develop these things, but the better we can do, the more, the higher the student outcomes will be across our system. And so that's, you really, where do you start? We're, we're starting in kindergarten. And so that's really one of the focuses. And really, that, that joy of learning, coming to school every day, running to your classroom, that's a piece of it. And then, yeah, like you saw in the chat, we really do have to have better outcomes for our students. And so just really thankful for the teachers for, like, they're so excited.
I think it's awesome. They're just so excited, and so, I mean, that's what it takes, that grassroots.
You said one of the buzzwords, the buzzword is joy. So when we had this kindergarten meeting, through all the statistics and research, we looked at, almost in every single article we were looking at, the one word that kept coming up was joy or joyful. And so we really wanted to take a step back, what is that going to look like? And it definitely encompassed that in our vision statement, so.
Thank you.
Not only kindergarten, but, yeah. K-12.
We appreciate that, and when we think about our desired daily experience, and that's, that's part of what we look for, and when we look at young learners like Lucy here, who had a big day and is probably pretty tired, we just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and I know that it's very, very important work, and it leads to those graduation rates. So thank you so much for everything you do.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
We move to our next item, 3B3, which states our Booster Club Guidelines, twenty-three, twenty-four. Is that really good? I don't know if you should start reading this table.
As, as we begin this work, I just want to say thanks to the team and to Simone and Executive Director Zunich and company who worked on these. I know that there was a lot of research that went into the work, again, various districts, so again, largely based on no comment, but all the work that was done, making sure that we have the best guidance and guidelines for our district booster clubs. So thank you, Executive Director Zunich.
Thank you very much. So, yes, we work closely with our athletic directors this summer to just update and revise and review our Booster Club Guidelines. It's an important piece. We are very grateful to our community and our families that volunteer their time and fundraise for us, it's a wonderful thing. So we did review other larger district websites for their Booster Club Guidelines. They were very closely aligned to what we have already. So we did add some additional language, and I'll point those out to you. And first, I'm going to start with the Chapter Fourteen Student Activity Accounting Language from the Minnesota Department of Education. I will read this paragraph. All financial activity of outside organizations, including banking, accounting, and reporting, must not be managed, accounted, or reported by the district, nor are they part of the school district's general fund, O-1. However, the district business office may provide guidance to the groups listed below regarding the processing of transactions between the district and these groups. These groups cannot use the district's tax ID number, examples of such groups included that are not limiting to the following. I highlighted just Booster Club, because that's what we're referring to tonight. And below, due to potential conflicts of interest, school employees must not direct or influence the activity, activities of the groups listed below or similar groups. For example, employees cannot be a controlling member on the board of these organizations. Okay, so that is the language from the department. I also contacted our state auditor and have an email from him as well confirming the same thing, so. So the next page, do you want me to read everything, or? I mean, this is going to be a tri-fold that will look like this, that will be sent out to the sites after tonight, will be sent out tomorrow, and the athletic directors will be sharing this with coaches and booster clubs.
And I'd say just if they're available, we'll use many of the examples.
Sure, okay.
And we, we had this in our board book, so.
We have, yes, and so you have it there. Very good. So we, we updated the graphics there to the right. I have to thank Brett Nancin for that, he's really good at that. And below that, it says it's a reference guide for booster clubs on guidelines and procedures required under Duluth Public Schools. In the blue box, this, this part's all new, we have the phone numbers for the activity offices for those school and high schools. We confirmed all the language with our two athletic directors. We went back and forth, and we made sure that everything was confirmed and agreed upon. And then the next page, I like, this page gives us the purpose of the booster clubs, our Title IX compliance, our communication conflict protocol. So this piece below is new, so if there's a communication or conflict protocol, we've provided that now. So families, students know how to, if they have an issue, they know where to start, and then the protocol to get their issue resolved. We have complete, provided in the middle column there, the legal compliance on, I've already had a couple calls this summer, like, how do we start a booster club? So we thought this was really good information. Minnesota High School League has it on their website as well. And of course, anyone's welcome to look at that website or even contact the state auditor as well. So we provided that information. And then Patty, would you just go a little bit to up again, to the blue box that I wanted to start there? We have suggested practices for finances. I'm just going to read number one through nine, okay? And then I'll be down with this. So the treasury report should contain all transactions that took place prior to the meeting. This is for the booster clubs, I should tell you. Yeah, this is for the booster clubs, not for us. Finances of each club should be open to all members. A paid coach should not have check-writing authority. It is vital that two people should be involved in the authorization and signing of any check. All purchases must go through the school district, and we outline that really well down below. At least two members should tabulate all funds collected, and boosters may not use the Duluth Public Schools' tax ID. We've now put that twice into this document. For the purpose of good communication with families, the Duluth Public Schools may need to request tax statements, receipts, expenditures, and balances. The key here is "may." I confirm that with our state auditor and our auditors. We are not required to do that, but we may do it. And number nine, the booster should not pay any coach directly or play a role in the amount a coach is paying. Yes?
So considering these guidelines, these are the suggested practices for finance for the boosters, booster clubs, but based on the MBE guidance, it says, in a paraphrasing, all financial activity of outside organizations like booster clubs must not be managed or accounted for or recorded by the district, nor are they part of the district's general fund.
These are suggested.
We do not have authority to manage booster clubs.
I have, we have absolutely no authority, but we are suggesting to them that this is how they can operate within their own group.
Which would be considered the guidance in the first paragraph.
Right, right, that's correct. Purchasing, we are, booster clubs wishing to purchase equipment for their teams must go through the head coach and the activities director for approval. Booster clubs should not purchase equipment independently. When equipment is purchased from donated funds, it becomes the property of the school district, so that is another important piece. So we've added, or updated some important language in here, and we'll go down a little bit more, dealing to booster clubs. So here, I'll finish this piece here, and then I can take, oh, and I have one more piece for you. All transportation fees and equipment purchases must be approved by the head coach and the athletic director. Prior to the trip, the activities director will build booster clubs for bus transportation that exceeds the district budget. So the district does provide a yellow school bus for their trips. If they want to upgrade, then we can build a booster club for that, okay? The activities department will build booster clubs for any things, for tournaments or games that exceed the given district budget. The district- The district may build booster clubs for supplies, equipment that exceeds the district budget. All donations must be turned into the athletic office prior to ordering." Okay, so that is the document. And working, after working with the athletic directors, they thought it would be a great idea, and I agree, to provide a Google Doc to anyone that comes into the AD's office and says, "I want to start a booster club," or "I want to operate this year," even if they're a global parent group. And you've got the booster club document in front of you. They have to check some boxes, and then, of course, they will have this now on a Google Sheet. So, we will know their federal tax ID number, even though I don't, we won't be managing it, but we will at least have a document in place. And then, as part of our audit every fall, with our regular with fleet auditors, internally finance will go into each, through the IRS, and check each one to see if they're an active booster club, okay? If they are a parent group, they are not a booster club. So, there's many wonderful outside organizations that do fundraisers with us. And if it is, if it is an employee or a coach or whatnot doing a fundraiser, we have a fundraiser form that's part of our process, it's approved at HR Business Services. The booster club can do their own fundraiser, they can raise their money, they can sell the coffee or the wreath. And if they're doing it for something for our students, as in uniforms and whatnot, the district can make that purchase and they can donate the money to us. And then we put them on the donation form. Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Zunich, who audits the booster club? And are they responsible for seeking their own financial audit?
That is a great question. And yes, they submit a tax return, and they can ask for their own booster club audit, but it's not part of the district's process.
So, if they're registered 501(c), 501(c)(2), they have responsibilities there to submit documentation to?
They have to file their taxes with IRS and the state.
All right.
Yes.
So, would the same hold too for just a parent group?
Not really, because they don't have that 501(c)(2) standing. So, if it's a group that has come together and said, you know, "We'd like to fundraise monies through our, for our tennis team," they can work with the coach and they can create a fundraiser. And at that time, a fundraising form would need to be filled out. We ask that it's filled out before the process, not afterwards. And then, once that fundraiser happens, and then the athletic director's office can make the purchase of what our item is, and then a donation, that donation from the fundraising would go to the district.
Okay, so Chair Fuld and I have coached and been involved in some of that. So, if the coach or the parents organize, they have kaffus or something like that, I mean, they're responsible for collecting that money? But that gets turned into the district then?
That gets turned.
For that team account?
That is correct, into the team account. And here's another great point. If, say, you know, it's happened to even my own kids when they were in high school and there was a fundraiser. My son wasn't always great at going out and doing, you know, fundraising and whatnot, but the monies that get fundraised go to the whole team. They're not just designated to only those kids that raise, some kids are fantastic at it, and they raise a thousand bucks, and then there's some that raise 500. It goes in as a collective amount, and it's for the entire team.
Joe.
Question. So, fundraising within teams is one thing. Boosters raise money other ways as well?
Booster clubs can do a fundraising on their own that is not, does not have to be submitted to the district because they're their own entity. But they, I mean, we want to know if they're doing it, they can let the athletic director know or the coach. But they are their own entity and they can do their own fundraising. And then they decide if they want to donate the money to us or not, but we have no control over it.
Okay, so, yeah, so booster clubs will promote the fundraiser?
That's correct.
Is it also, in my memory, it was that if the booster club does a fundraiser, the team does not necessarily do the work for that?
That is correct.
So, if they're doing a spaghetti dinner at Mr. D's, the booster club can do all of that and parents will do all of the work, but the team members aren't doing that because it's a fundraiser for the boosters.
That is correct. They can offer to help, they can volunteer their time. I'm sure there's many parents or guardians that are on a booster club. And the students, of course, can help out, but they are responsible for their own fundraiser and for their own work.
So, those are just little caveats and idiosyncrasies. Is that somewhat somewhere else in a booster question from the state? Where it is an expectation that when boosters do fundraisers, team, the players are not a part of it? Or am I gone in the weeds here?
I think so, maybe a little bit. So, I think.
I say that with all respect. So many years.
No, it's a great question, because you've been there. So, you understand. So, we, Teresa and I and Anthony and Patty, we could be our own booster club, and we could say, hey, we're going to make some ravioli and we're going to sell it, and then we're going to give the money to the district. And we can specify the intent. Maybe Teresa's daughter says, "Okay, Mom, I'm going to come help you." That can certainly happen. Okay?
Never said no. So, I'm sort of on the board and knowing that we approve these donations to the district, why do I feel like I'm missing these booster club donations that we should be approving? Isn't that something that should be happening?
Good question. I have an answer for it. So, I spoke with the two athletic directors. There hasn't been a lot happening in the last two years since COVID, so that's one thing. And the athletic directors are working on it as we speak. Now, we finished our transportation and are up charges for coaches, coach buses. They're working through that list right now. And now, once that list has been put together, the athletic director will be sending a bill to the booster club, so you should be seeing that coming in. It's all part of our year-end work. And it's mostly for, honestly, it's mostly for transportation right now. Yeah.
And I can attest to that because I'm coached that wants a coach bus if I can have it, and I know that there is, the district will pay for my yellow school bus to go to Andover, but not the coach bus to go there. So, I pay that difference. And, yeah, okay. So, I can see where booster plus, that is one of their really big focuses, because in Duluth, we always have to travel, whether it be a football, speech or debate, or, you know, lacrosse, we are going across the state because we're a double A school and we have to travel so far to get competition. But I thank you for all of this. I really have a bit of concern with the, the purpose of good communication with families during public schools may need to request tax statements, receipts, expenditures, and balances. I kind of get that, but that may kind of, it just doesn't, I'd rather, if the Department of Minnesota, Department of Education says, "We have no, no authority." You know, what if the booster club, so we say, "We may ask for this," and they say, "No, we're not giving it to you." You made it clear in the presentation on today that it is not required, so.
I can, I can very, nothing's been released yet, so I can very much take that word out.
I don't know what anybody else is thinking. I know a lot of work went into this and there's a lot of reason behind why you put it in there. But I just think that "may," that could also lead down the road to some, I just think prejudice or equity or, you know, what becomes an issue? This, you know, we might not be on the board in four years in this document. I'm sure it can go through some changes, but if we're not on the board, you know, and they don't hear our discussion with that particular thing. But have conversation at the expert level, but I wonder about them for me. We may do it.
I can take up a whole paragraph because I have confirmation, well, as you see from MBE and from the state auditor, that we do not have to ask for them. So, I mean, I, we kept that in there because it has been a guideline here, but I can certainly change the wording and bring it back to you if you'd like. Unless you have a good recommendation on?
Well, I'd like to hear from other board members, but I know I'm just kind of, you know, we're discussing this and I don't think we need to jump to a change.
We don't.
Necessarily, that's just my perspective, but certainly just a consideration.
I consider, before I jump in, Amber, let's get your mic less on before you.
Yeah, but let's finish this discussion and then I'll go back to it, because it wasn't specifically about.
Oh, no problem. It's written in the accent.
Sure, I think it would be wise for us to take a look at, have a conversation with some of the guiding entities like the Minnesota State and High School League, maybe NSBA and/or our legal counsel, just so that we can make sure that we're holding the highest standards for our district.
Oh, I prefer we get it right this time, yeah.
Amber Stoudamire.
I agree, the word "may," I just have some problems about it too, as far as like, well, one and not the other. And then I had a follow-up question for you. You said something about the guidance. I don't know if that's the word that you used, that we've used previously, is there?
Well, there has, there has been a booster club document that has always been on our website since I got here in April of 2021. So, it's something the athletic directors have been talking to me about for the last six months, that they really felt that, it had the clock tower on it, whenever it was time to update it. And we wanted to bring in our communication conflict protocol information on there. So, I can certainly, I'll send it to the state auditor, I can send it to the high school league, and also send it to our own attorney and ask if that language can be better presented. Happy to do it.
Given offer.
All right. I agree with just having it reviewed in some other ways, because I think I have superintendent Maggie said, "We want to use the best practice that is recommended and consistent with what other districts also may be using." So, I support that. This is really wonderful, just again, in terms of being a part of many booster clubs over the years with my own kids seeing this document. I'm wondering, do we have a list, or maybe that's in the process of, at our middle schools and our high schools, of all the booster clubs that are existing right now? That would just be interesting to see.
We do, the athletic directors do hold those. We are also in the finance department updating our W9 document, so for anybody that has a booster club holding, and we're sending all of those out again to get, addresses have changed, you know, federal ID numbers and whatnot. So, we do have a list. The athletic directors have always maintained a list. And the idea is for, to get a new list every year, because many groups can disband, sometimes after a sport is done. So, that's why they also created this Google Sheet or this Google Doc, so we will have a current Google Sheet at all times. And I think that will be very helpful for the board too. So, if you ask, I can present that to you and you'll know right away who's doing what for us.
Fair. And I don't want to kind of confuse the conversation here, but just because I was the state PTA president, and we have a lot of PTAs in Duluth, we, what I really appreciated by this document is, is there are a lot of state regulations and federal regulations that our local PTAs follow. They're not booster clubs, they're separate organizations, but they follow many of these strict guidelines, like two signatures and how many people can, you know, who can be on there and all of that. And so, I just really, while I was going through kind of the information you provided, I was kind of thinking of that half with that separate group that we also deal with as a district is our PTAs that are affiliated national and state and get guidelines. So, I just, I guess I was thinking about that while I was reading. It's really, it's a great pamphlet that'll be a useful tool for parent leaders.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the guidance. I will follow up with that. And can we bring it back to next one?
Sure.
Okay. I'll do that, thank you.
I was just going to add one more really quick thing, just piggybacking off of what Amber Lafferty said. I just, I appreciated that you had the suggested practices for finance, because I think, I don't know, I think that was a really nice, concise, accurate little section that kind of goes over some really best practices when it comes to non-profit finance, including dual controls. And I think sometimes when these things are started, someone might not have the knowledge of these financial policies and practices that are really important, so, thank you.
And you?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Move to our next item, 3B5, Improving Systems and Enrolling. Correction, 3B4, Improving Systems, Recruiting and Retaining. Xavier Richter.
Thank you. We have such beautiful. Great thing. I'm just going to give you a quick update of the human resources action cards that we are working on for this year, and this will be an ongoing project, but this is kind of where we're starting at. And tonight's topic is recruiting and retaining. So, we'll just kind of go through, and there is time for questions at the end. If you have questions during, please go over to ask. So, the vision really of the whole recruitment and retention plan will serve as that strategic footprint for recruiting, hiring, and retaining quality employees for Duluth Public Schools. It's a yearly process, so it is cyclical, and we will revise and change as we need to, but to attract and develop support and retain highly qualified teachers and support staff for schools and across the districts. So, the three key tasks that we're focusing on initially with this plan is defining recruitment needs, developing a compelling recruitment message, and creating a recruitment and retention So, defining the recruitment means, you know, a big part of this is assessing the staffing requirements across the departments and identify where recruitment is needed. You know, we know right now, for example, that we need bus drivers, we need paraprofessionals, and so we will up our recruitment efforts for those positions. We will have meetings later in the, later in the month, as well as a couple of other times throughout the school year with building leaders and department leaders to whatever staffing needs going to be, so that we can generate our recruitment plans based on what we're foreseeing will happen. And then part of that as well is identifying, who are the viable applicants? How do we get them to become applicants for the school district? And then seek employment with us and get us to that point. And really, a big part of that is looking at some of those hard-to-fill positions, and how do we move a plan forward that can help address those continually hard-to-fill positions? So, recruitment messaging is really important, and I think, you know, I talked about it before, that we really need to provide a reason for people to come work at Duluth Public Schools, and why is that, why is that something that they want to do? So, we need to motivate them to seek jobs here.
People back.
Okay. So, the motivation, really, the first thing they're going to see is that message, that tagline, that what does Duluth Public Schools have for us. And it really does affect not only the recruitment of employees, but also the retention of employees. So, did we get you here and then we really are doing what we said we are doing and who we are as an organization and what our values are, those type of things? And then our overall perception in the community in, you know, getting people to want to come and work here and be a part of our team. So, recruitment messaging, as I was saying, we really want to make sure that it's aligned with the mission, vision, and core values that we just worked on through our strategic plan. And then, why are we an employer of choice in our community? What kind of work environment do we provide? What kind of culture, what kind of career paths might we have here for somebody coming in the door? And then, those more tangible things also, the what do we offer, what kind of benefits? Do we promote, what kind of compensation and then opportunity for professional development and growth for employees coming in? So, a big part of this whole process is to create a recruitment and retention. So a big part of this whole process is to create a recruitment and retention plan. This is really, like I said, the first phase of many years of a process that we will put in place that will kind of guide us on how do we attract? How do we go through the process of making sure that we are putting things in place to, to develop and retain and attract the right qualified teachers and staff so that we can have a fully staffed team for the district? So some of the things that we will put in our recruitment plan, so this is one of our goals, is to have this developed by the end of the month here actually, more, a more specific plan that will really talk about what are we going to do? And these are some of the things that, that we have to be put in place here. Looking at our application process, right now it's the same process whether you're a teacher or whether you're an hourly cafeteria monitor. So we want to make it more simplified for some of those positions. And then make sure we're getting the information you need from every position applicant so that we can do some screening and better looking at those applicants as they come through. Make sure our recruitment materials are clear and what we offer and who we are. And the messaging is really right there. People don't have to dig and look for it. Put forth hiring timelines. And this is more specific to our certified staff. We've pushed up our timelines as you probably are aware over the last few years. And I'm happy to say that we are 100% certified staff full right now. And we were as of Monday. So making sure we have those timelines in place, that we're communicating in the principles and going through those processes and the building leaders and having those really laid out so that we can get the best candidates at the most opportune times. Look to increase where we're posting our jobs. How, how far are we spreading that message? Are we targeting the right groups? Are we trying to diversify where we're looking to do that? Utilizing our social media platforms, which you'll notice we've started to do a little bit more on our Facebook page and Instagram. So thanks to my team as well as Patty for getting those things pushed. And we're also looking at what else can we do from different types of advertisements? We saw the videos, I think at a previous meeting that we put out on our webpage or you've seen them to kind of highlight what's a day in the life for some of our non-certified staff. So continue to do those type of things. Being more present in the community by attending job fairs and different recruitment events, community events. Make sure that we are present and the public schools is open, kind of front center. We've talked a lot about your own programs and we are in kind of the beginning phases of that. So that will be something that we'll probably be trying to, by the end of this year, kind of put in place, what will that look like going forward? So that we can really move to do that. That, that will help us, I think, diversify staff as well, but give us some outlets that we can look for employees. And then increase our interview teams to include diverse screening and diverse people on the teams. And we also want to provide training to staff that are going to sit on interviews so that there's really a conscious, you know, what I meant to do before, what's the, what's the, the, um, the pieces that are going to speak to me as a candidate? And also how does that voice value to the team in those processes?
You mentioned, you mentioned that every certified physician was still on Monday and I think that's huge. It's been probably 10 years since I've worked in a district where every position was filled at the beginning of school year. There's always been a lag, especially since COVID. We have non-certified positions that are certainly yet that we're working on, but I just want to point out to the whole group how impressive that is.
Do you want to clarify just so everyone has the same language? I mean, we know what a certified physician is, but other people might not, just to clarify that for.
Thank you. As someone who didn't come from an education background, I was very confused until when I first came here and now it's just second nature. So thank you for pointing that out. So certified staff is anyone that's in that teaching profession. Our non-certified staff is any of our support staff. So paraprofessionals, food service workers, bus drivers, maintenance and operations staff, cafeteria or cafeteria monitors, so anyone that's not in that teaching profession.
And certified would also include social workers or administrators or others too, but basically anybody who is four-year and licensed and, and needs a specific four-year license.
Just saying. Thank you. Thank you, Director Severance. So on the recruitment and retention plan list there, we have increased job posting locations. So I know we had the bus, DTA bus last year. Do we have that again this year or are we looking at some other sites or locations for?
I believe we do still have a bus. And then we're also looking at, you know, maybe digital third-party advertising and whatever. We've utilized some ground stake signs to say that we're hiring. We actually had them up at Piedmont for their open halls, so.
I was just curious, there probably is legal, means we could, could we advertise for bus drivers on our own buses, like on the back of the bus? Or is there a state law that we can't do something like that on a yellow school bus?
I know we do in other states, so we have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I've not seen it here.
Well, we don't have that. The luxury, I mean, the new transportation location doesn't have the luxury of the old transportation location where a big banner or a sign out there to, you know, that people are going to drive by and see or maybe, you know, notice that, say, you know, maybe I want to try to drive the school bus. I don't know if it's in Oregon. Do job fairs or do we have any data on, you know, what is the most successful method in some of the recruit? Is it the job fairs you think or some other method?
I think, I mean, I could pull the data, although we do ask that question in our application process, but I think a lot of it is word of mouth. And somebody knows somebody that works here and they have good benefits and they like what they do and so they, which is, which is great, right? We want our employees to encourage their friends to come, come and be here. I think we do get some notice in the community and doing those fairs because as I've mentioned before, if you don't know that there's other staff, not just teaching staff that work at schools, you don't know what kind of jobs they have and what there's, what availability there is. And before coming into this world, I didn't know what a paraprofessional was or did. I didn't know well of that. So I think there's a lot of people out there that just don't understand what other types of positions are in these schools. And so being present to be able to answer those questions and kind of show that there's a wide variety of positions that we have available here is super helpful.
Thank you. Member LaFerk.
I really loved the work that you've done on social media and that's allowed, you know, many of us to share that and get it out to our own kind of communities. And so that, that's been really impressive. I was curious just because of conversations I've often had, but just recently had about, are we doing anything specific to kind of recruit our own parents to work for the district? Like any specific strategies that are just tailored on that?
So this year we did attend an open house to try, to try to get parents to come and maybe do cafeteria supervision. But we haven't really done it very targeted other than that to this point.
Okay.
But we probably certainly could work with the schools, especially those that have needs to be able to put something in their newsletters, like all to families. And, you know, that, that's a great opportunity to reach out, especially for those positions that maybe they don't want to be in a full-time, but they want to be in the school when their child's there. We have a lot of parents that do it already.
We do and that I, so I was just wondering, as you were thinking about different strategies, if there was something you were thinking about specific to our parents.
Along that line, we are looking at social media targeted marketing, which could target parents as well.
This is exciting.
And I'm not sure if you can actually click on those links or not, but the top one really just brings you to those videos that I was referring to earlier that we were able to put in on our website. It's on the Coors page. We have four well-done videos there of different positions in the organization and we will be adding to those as we move forward.
We're also adapting some of the videos so that they can be used as television commercials, video spots.
Yeah, so we're working right now. These are about two and a half minutes each, so we're working to get them abbreviated to 15, 30 seconds so that they're just kind of snippets of that so we can do more advertising with it. Some of them will want to play one of these, the, maybe the one in the top right. Yeah.
Some people think a kitchen is working in a greasy kitchen, over fry or sweating. It's really a more enjoyable experience than that. I'm Carrie Shae and I've worked with the district since 2016 in food service. I went to school here, born in. My roots are pretty, pretty deep. There's a few employees here that went to school here. We're still in high school.
I don't either.
The child nutrition department is integral to the operation of a school. I started out and I was only working like three and a half hours a day. And I learned quite a few things. Every year we serve in the district from fall to spring, 1.5 million meals. They come quick and they're hungry. They're teenagers. They're here, they eat. We see them twice a day, sometimes three times a day. There's a little bit of a task at hand to, to getting it done, but every day it happens. I look forward to somebody who can change ears quickly, that someone push comes to shove, that has vision, that can follow the time clock. Sometimes you haven't been exposed to the kinds of ovens and mixers, but you'll learn. One of the best benefits is that we are a union. We get sick time. We get all of the time the kids get off. Administration is great. We build relationships with kids. We get them comfortable. You know, this is their home away from home. We're looking for people to come and work in our kitchen that have a positive willingness to give it a try. We can see you in the kitchen.
The other, the other link I have in there is, I had mentioned in a video a couple of months ago that we were invited by Colm to go speak at the National Health and Wellness in Minneapolis. And they actually in their LinkedIn and on their webpage, kind of wrote an article about doing public schools and offering what we're offering to our employees. So when you think about not only retention, but recruitment, some of the things that we have in place that, you know, sure, we really are trying to care about our, our employees and what can we do? It connects to that culture and some of that environmental pieces that I mentioned earlier. So this is just something to let you read. You can put an eye, hopefully, in your, in your packets there, but really, really proud of the staff that we were able to, to go down and present in front of a large group of folks as well as then having an article written about that. And our staff actually were a big part of this, so. And then done with that, so any questions?
Thank you.
I don't, I don't really have any. I know, you know, when I'm watching all of this too, and it probably bears the fact that, you know, right now we have a robust or not robust, we have filled our, our certified staff. So, you know, but when I look at recruit and retain, you know, you've got a big job to fill because you're, you're both trying to retain and recruit and retain our certified and our non-certified. And I just, I just love that it's intentional. I know, you know, in years past, you know, school districts really didn't have to do this. And, and I, you know, we can all say it's been this, this increase since COVID, but it had started to, it had started to be a hard sell sometimes to get a large. When I first started teaching, I think there were like 300 applicants for a teaching job at Denfeld in the English department and you had to battle your way through. And now, you know, sadly, we don't, we don't have that, that kind of competition. And sometimes that does not always then bring our best staff to, to our district. So I, I love your focus, especially the, the fact that you are intentionally have vision in your retain and retention and recruitment. And then I would just encourage us too to go to other states and, and really sit at some of their fairs. States that right now, you know, there's a lot of teachers that want to teach in Minnesota because we have a value system that agrees with their value systems. So I'd love to see you at, at those, at those open houses or those, what are they called? Job fairs.
Thank you. Chair of the board, I'd like to pull an audible. I would like to switch the last remaining agenda items and move to student performance data, key improvement strategies and efforts. Can the team please come up? Who was presenting? So we will move into item 3B seven, student performance data and key improvement strategies and efforts. So everyone who is part of the presentation, please come up and join us at the table. I want the team to introduce themselves. There's several people, Jason and Laura, come join us up here as well. We move through those files here, there's more than a chair in here.
You don't get a table.
That's right. So I'll have the team introduce themselves. The purpose of this presentation is to really provide the board and the community with some additional information related to our student performance data that was just released last week. We want to give the board and the community some insight on a little deeper dive into the data as well as some key strategies and efforts that we are implementing to improve outcomes for students. Team here and, and other individuals were not able to make it today because there are a number of situations. I think someone mentioned before, there are individuals who are out ill and have unfortunate deaths in family. And so several other presentations would be here if those things were not happening to them. So we want to wish them and their families well. I'll start off with.
Laura Thurston, Assistant Director, Special Services.
Jason Green, Special Director.
Bruce Spence, Director of Elementary Schools.
Sherri Williams, Preschool Coordinator.
Jake Ryan, Learning Coordinator.
Karen Callie, Director of Urban Health and Social Social Media and TSS Coordinator.
Thank you, Ed. Starting with the presentation, normally it would be Dr. Lake who kicks it off for us because we start off with the why and give a really good dive into the data. But someone was willing to step in and lead the presentation off and I want to thank her for that. Elementary Director, Iber Springs.
Thank you. Yes, so I am going to try to step in for Tommy Lake. That's a hard, big shoes to fill, so I'll do the best I can. I didn't step in up this afternoon, so let's see. So I'm going to be talking about data, different forms of data, and then some of the outcomes that we've experienced in the last spring. Really the grounding that Tommy has in here is pointing out that, you know, a school is just not all about a score. And MCA's in particular, it's a snapshot of a specific day and time. So I'm glad that she included that in here because if you press on it. Oh, sorry. You know, school needs so much more and especially like we heard about that playful learning and the joy that school can bring and a love of learning. So we need several types and levels of data to assess how best to support our students, which we'll learn about in the next couple slides. And MCA's is mostly what we'll be focusing on today. That's just one piece of very high-level data. Its primary purpose is a system check for us. They're really measured how well we are addressing the standards in our grade levels that are tested in math, reading, and science. So yes, we look at individual student status. Yes, we look at classrooms, their grade levels. But really for us as a district, it really, you know, gives us a check on how we were, how we're doing systematically. The categories and levels of data, so the five columns across the top are the categories of data that she has outlined in here. Really we have student achievement data, which is what we'll be talking about today. And we have student non-academic data, which I know you hear about, let's say attendance, discipline, all those types of things. Perception data, which is more that survey data, gathering information from stakeholders, whoever that is. Program data, so that's really things that drive our system, like curricular choices that we might make. And then fidelity data, are we doing what we said we're going to do? And if we are implementing something, are we doing it well? And, you know, according to. And, you know, according to the parameters of the program. And so those are the five different categories. And then on the bottom here, she outlined some of the cell work that we do and there are different levels of data that we might incorporate into our learning, especially that equity learning. So satellite is a very more of the high data. MCA's would be example of that. Math data is a little more refined and maybe individual kids, and that's more like our FAS, our screening information. And then that street data, that's like in the classrooms, driving day-to-day instruction, that formative assessment, how teachers learn about their kids and take next steps in instruction. So we have those three levels of data as well. A balanced assessment system really has many different parts to it. I would like, just that formative assessments, that's in the classroom and that's how the teacher decides and makes decisions for instruction. We have a formal classroom assessments, that's end of unit tests, pre-test, post-test, those things that give the teacher information about how well a child did over time on a topic. Diagnostic interventions assessments, this is an interesting topic and most districts and schools don't do a very good job of this. I love that we're talking about it and actually the REAP includes that in it too. Because we do have our screeners. We do know where kids are kind of a little bit, but then we have to dig deeper to see exactly what the child's hurdle is. And so then we can address that hurdle so they can move on to the next field. So it's kind of a progression of skills and knowing where that, where that kid is in that progression. Inter- and benchmark screening assessments, that's our FAS that I know that you know about. And then external, so it's that state, that external substantive assessments. Any questions about that? You might have heard of this. Additional context for reviewing the data in a minute is the summary achievement data for MCA's. It's for all students who took the test. There's different screeners that you can use when you go into MDE's report card, but we look at all students tested. Data is reported as percent proficiency. So when we look at a 56%, that means 56% of the students who took the test met or exceeded in that assessment. Several ten or fewer students are blank, so they don't report that out. And then state assessments, as you know, more than during the pandemic, we all shut down and didn't take it. And then the next year after that, there were historically low participation rates in testing MCA's, which really skew some of the information for 2021. Last year, or 2022 and 2023, that became less of a problem. But when you look at 2021, just keep that in mind that a lot of families didn't engage at that time and kids didn't, a lot of kids didn't come to school. Data included in the Minnesota report card, which I was just talking about, Allen North Star uses eight state identified racial and ethnic codes, which I think you're familiar with. There is a difference between state identification and federal identification when it comes to American Indian student population. So and when you go into the Minnesota report card and you click, you do the federal and then you click state, you'll get two different proficiencies there. So just keep that in mind. Then there's some recalculation when those changes happen. She notes here at 2018, 19. So just to keep that in mind, there was some recalculations in those gears of transition. She also points out the state definition of American Indian changed and gets some perspective on that. Some persons have origins in Indian, original peoples of North America and maintain cultural identification through title, tribal affiliation or community recognition. And many students are descended from the US or other than Hawaiian or Canadian tribe regardless of other racial background. So that just changes that when you click that state button in the report card, it changes the, all of us perhaps. So we're going to look at the actual data now. And she put together a reading map inside, say, on a very similar format. So reading, if we look across the top, there's schools or categories of students that experienced increases in reading. The next column are schools or grades or categories that experienced a decrease in reading proficiency, stayed the same, so didn't go either way. And then the last three, she compared DeLuise proficiency in reading to the state. Did we, were we above the state in proficiency on average or were we below the state? So reading for increases, American Indian, Asian, English learners and free and reduced lunch all increased their reading scores. And then you can see there are five categories that have, have some decreases there. We did have some grades who experienced increases, so fourth, fifth and sixth grade mean for elementary and had some decreases in third, seventh, eighth and 10th. And then you can see the schools there who experienced increases or decreases or stayed the same. Above the state, so on average, how did DeLuise do? On average, how did that same group do in reading? So all students, American Indian, Asian, Hispanic, Latino, white, English learners percentages, they all perform above the state on average with those same categories. All of our grades who test for reading have higher percentage on average than the state, which is great. And then you can see the schools there that perform above the state. Below the state, we do have some challenges. You can see Black or African-American students and you'll see that as a theme going across our data. Children of races, special education, all perform on average below the state proficiency. And then there are several schools that are listed who perform below the state. That doesn't mean they didn't experience increases though, I just want to point that out, such as Lower Math performs below the state, although they increased their reading score last year. So for themselves, they did better. So I just want to make sure that we're not missing out on those too. And the next slide is math. And you'll see that it follows the same format. So increases and decreases, did they have more proficient students or less proficient students in math on the MCA's? Again, fourth and sixth grew and seventh also did increase their scores. And then you can see a free reduced again, American Indian, Asian, Hispanic, Latino, English learners again. So we have some consistencies in reading and math on categories that experienced growth. And then also the decreases, Black and African-American students, two or more students. So you're going to see that theme throughout here. Above the state are several schools, three of our grades and some of our categories of students. And then the next slide is science. Of course, science, we only tested in fifth, eighth and then one time in high school, which is usually that grade. And so it's always, again, the same format. We did have schools that increased their science score. We did have a lot of schools that didn't. They did, did decrease their science scores. So there are some challenges there. And you'll see that Black and African-American students decreased their scores and also scored below the state. So just want to point out that that's kind of a theme and a problem that we've talked about and we're guessing, so. The next slide is celebrations, right? There were, there's a lot of wins there. Grade five is above the state in all three tested areas. Grade five, you know, I'm very proud of that and we should really look into that, see what they're doing, which we will, but that's great. Asian, Hispanic, Latino, English learners are all above the state in reading, math and science. So there's some consistency there. Lower Math, Lowell Spanish virgin, Mary Creek made increases in all three tested areas. That's what I was, like Lower Math, for instance, they don't beat the average of the state, but they sure did make some good gains last year. And then Compton, Holcroft, Lakewood, Lester Park, Lowell Spanish virgin, Ordean East are all above the state average in all three tested areas. So we really do have some shiny stars there. And then we have some challenges. Like I said, in Black, our reading, math and science, our Black and African-American students either decreased their proficiency and scored below the state average. So there's, there's real challenges there. Special education is below the state in reading and math. So as compared to all special education across the state, we're just not quite doing as well on averages as they do across the state, so. And then Lower Math, Myers Wilkins, Stoli, Park, Denfield, Mary Creek, they all perform below the state average in all three areas tested. So North Star accountability, that was MCA data, which feeds the North Star accountability system. And really this was in response to the average students succeed, succeed acts. I don't know, was that like 2015 maybe? And so North Star was in response to Minnesota's plan for addressing the requirements of SF. We used to have AYP and reward schools and all that. So that's gone, this replaces it. And really what it's for is tagged down by schools who need additional support, either targeted support, which is really specific to the needs of the school and is mostly on the local agency to address, or more comprehensive support, which is that regional centers of excellence comes in. They use several indicators to identify schools and it's like a funnel with stages that schools actually kind of run through this funnel. So stage one is all about academic achievement and progress. And so if a school doesn't meet the, geez, the baseline for that, then they go on to the next stage through this funnel. The second stage is academic progress. So like Lower Math, they might not meet those baselines for proficiency, but they're making progress. They're making gains. So they might stop at that stage then. But if they don't, if they're actually not making progress either, they go on through the funnel to the last stage, which is consistent attendance. And so once you go through all those stages, then they identify those schools for targeted or comprehensive support. Let's see, they use the MCA data, which we just talked about. Yeah, and then they, they do, it's a little bit different calculation for the North Star. So if you ever see percentages for North Star, they're not going to match what we report out because they have different criteria. So just keep that in mind that there's not going to be a correlation. There'd be somewhat of a correlation, but it won't be the same. We use all students tested for our check, not the North Star calculations. We actually use the, the real information. North Star includes, one interesting thing is special education students who are exited continue to be for, I guess it's another two or three years that they have their proficiency back to the school where they were exited. So there's things like that that are really different that make the numbers, yeah, so we don't use that. Identifications for every three years, so we know we have that 2022, it'll be again in 2025. We have seven schools in our district that were identified. 2022, 2023, North started out with racial groups, can't be compared to some of the previous stuff because of what I talked about, they changed some of the criteria. So just keep that in mind. Graduation rates, consistent attendant day of data are recorded, they're always one year behind. It's like we just learned about 2022 graduation rates. We won't know 2023's until next spring, so it's always off by one year. So the next slide is that North Star accountability. Targeted assistance, you've heard about this before. So Myers Wilkins, Lower Math, Lowell, AEO, and then what groups they were identified for. So they're receiving basically of the targeted is local support with some, we do get some assistance from regional center of excellence for targeted schools, but not much. And then the next slide is our comprehensive support. These schools get a lot of support on a weekly basis from the regional centers of excellence and myself, Tanya, Jen, we all partner with them and to address the needs of these schools and especially in the areas that they're identified. Oh, she put a bunch of things in here for you. Very efficient and if you want to, you can go into all those links and look at all the raw data for this stuff. And then really the assessment, Tanya and the work that she does, she's going to continue supporting and monitoring that continuous improvement process in our districts with CIT. She works very closely with the principals. She does a lot of professional development for the principals and leads and guides them in that process. So we're very thankful for her leadership in that, in that realm. It's created over the last year and then going into this year, a lot of consistency in our continuous improvement efforts in the school. So very thankful for all the work she does. We did get in, we put an investment into a data warehouse, EdgeClimber. So everyone has, will have eventually have access to this rich, so much data. If you're a data person, you love EdgeClimber. And I do, so. And then CIT's teachers, principals, anybody can go in there and pull up information literally almost at their fingertip. And it talks with, in the campus and FAS and MCA's, so everything just gets updated in there. So it's going to be fabulous. You'll probably learn more about that as we go down the train people. We've only trained the principals and some others, I'm not really sure, but I remember about it.
Let me add something to that. So as you know, we start off with the facts and the data. So thank you, Director Sparks, for sharing the information. As a district, we are taking this very seriously. While we have schools that have students who are doing well, we know that as a district we have students who are not. As a district, we are committed to making sure all of our students succeed, starting with our strategic planning process, making sure that we have that plan in place. And so this team and all those other individuals who were not able to make it, they are really focused on making sure that everything we talk about or identify in our strategic plan cascades down all the way through department plans and school improvement plans. It's all about continuous improvement and that's what we've been focusing on. And the slide that talks about, if you could go back one more for me, that talks about assessment, really focuses on the data, really focuses on make sure that each department leader, make sure that each principal is thinking in a continuous improvement or with a continuous improvement mindset, make sure our teachers think in a continuous improvement mindset. Once they have the actual data, they take their data and say, how can we improve? What kind of, what would be the goals that we would set for our students, each and every one of them? Really identifying and students who need targeted support and make sure those students receive those targeted supports. And so this team has been working really hard to develop department plans and principals are in the process of developing school improvement plans to improve outcomes for students. And so the next part of the presentation is going to share just some of the highlights of some of the core strategies, not all of those strategies. What's going to happen in October is another presentation with additional information that's going to go deeper into some of the strategies that we are implementing as a district to improve outcomes for kids because that's what we're committed to. We want to make sure each and every one of our students succeed. Earlier, each and every one of our students Earlier, each and every one of our students must grow in their achievement and in their outcomes. So with that, we're going to turn it over to some of our core work related to literacy that Director Sparks and others have been ushering.
I just have a quick question about the slide before that, the assessment one, where it talks about the CIT teams and then the tier two teams. And are those two different teams within a school with two different makeups of people?
Yes, they are.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
The continuous improvement team is the team that the principal has with other teacher leaders to really take a deep dive into performance data and to determine what strategies or efforts that will go into the school improvement plan. The tier two teams, those teams take a look at data, go a little further and deeper, and make some decisions on what strategies or enrichments or interventions students will receive. So we have teams who really look at that data and make some determinations on those extra supports the students will receive.
And they involve teachers from different grade levels and things like that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Director Sparks?
Okay, yes, you can begin. So literacy is part of our priority work for this year and I imagine going into next year. So I'm very excited to share with you our literacy frameworks for 23, 24. And there are links in there, the K2 framework and the 3-5 framework, and then the ELA elementary guide page. We worked very hard last spring and over the summer, developing these and making them as detailed as we could without being overwhelming for teachers. We wanted them to have all the information they needed, so you'll find links in there. And we really needed to address the requirements of the read act, and also just change some of our resources and practices. Sally did a good job earlier, talking about learning labs, discovery labs, but you'll see those incorporated into the frameworks, and so all teachers are using this new resource, this school year. And it's aligned with the science of reading, so in the K2 and the 3-5 frameworks, you'll see a formative awareness, phonics, comprehension, vocabulary, writing, you'll see all of these different components that make up our literacy blocks. And then, and I put in here, K2, we included that new phonics instruction. Wonders has some of that, it just doesn't go deep enough to make a difference that we need for our kids. So U5, I forget, I forget what that stands for, I have to, but all K2 teachers have been trained on, what is it?
We're recovered, I'm in.
Oh, she's recovered. So Laura has been pivotal and instrumental in getting this in our classrooms, so very thankful for her and her partnership. But all the teachers have been trained, they have their resources, and they're very excited about it. 3-5, we did a vocabulary training for them, which is aligned to the science of reading, so we took one thing off the framework and really drilled down on that with the teachers the week before school started, was that just last week? And then, middle school also did some revision of their ELA pacing guides over the summer. They hadn't done that in a while, and there was a lot of inconsistencies across the middle schools on how they were executing ELA. So the way Dale explained it is, this is a bridge between these standards, and then we're going to have to implement new standards 2025. So this will get us through to 2025 and really create some consistency in our programming in the middle schools. The elementary schedule, of course, did a lot of things for us, but one thing I'm really proud of is the teachers, the principals, the schools took that schedule framework last May, and they worked very hard on designing their blocks of instruction, and really thinking about core, and then incorporating when, all of the things that they need to, and of course, different grade spans have different needs. And so, we made sure that our ELA block is 120 minutes or approximately 120 minutes in K1-2, and then approximately 20 minutes in 3-5. We didn't have a lot of consistency there, so now we do. That was part of designing that schedule in May. And then also the wing blocks, there wasn't a lot of guidance around that, but last May they were, they took that and they designated wing blocks and made sure they were staggered, so if I'm an interventionist, I can get to kindergarten, I can get to first, they're not at the same time. So that is going to make a huge difference. And then common prep for teachers across our elementary schools is huge. We do have that, so now during the day, teachers can actually plan together and do a lot of things that they weren't able to do before. Jen added that they're really focusing on literacy strategies through a practice profile of the middle schools. Lincoln Park happens, I think they are drilling down on that, and then Ordean is jumping on with them, so that's going to be part of their middle school literacy focus. And then PLC rebook, that's part of our, you know, part of what we're doing this year too. We're starting slow to go fast, of course, so we have a district PLC committee that met August 8th. We took some of the feedback from there, we are doing a revision of the PLC handbook, having been updated in a while, so that needed to happen. And then a district-wide common PLC agenda, every school does it completely differently. I actually gathered a lot of them today, I think we're, no more similar. So we're going to get some continuity there across actually all of our sites. And then in the PLCs, it'll be literacy-focused, K5, of course. That doesn't mean we're not doing math, we're not doing science, we're not doing all these other things, it just means we have a heavy emphasis on reading. If our kids don't read well in elementary schools, then the whole system falls down. And then teacher clarity, when you hear about that, that'll be the work of the PLCs, it's a process of addressing standards, learning targets, success criteria. So it's a way of leading teachers, guiding them through what should a PLC be doing. So if you hear teacher clarity, that's kind of a catchphrase for all these different strategies that you'll, that we'll be executing in the PLCs. And then content area committees, that's different. In some of our subject areas, for like PE, we'll have a committee that works on the content, the standards, addressing the pacing guides. On the big four, ELA, math, science, and social studies, we're actually going to have a content specialist, and actually at elementary and secondary, so we're kind of putting more of that emphasis on those core and then breaking it apart for ele, we did have one person doing science for the whole district. That just does not, elementary does not align with secondary, so we broke that apart. And then for the other content areas, we're doing these committees. It seems like that's the thing to do, I think everyone agrees, so. And all of that's moving towards a, I guarantee the viable curriculum for our district, which means we guarantee we're teaching this and we have enough time to do it. So, we're going to have a kindergarten task force, which I'm very excited about, we're referring about, so, all right. Now Laura gets to talk about her new one.
And what we're after, if I was a classroom teacher, maybe standing, everybody standing up and stretch, just so we can get blood back, you're right, here now, but we do have a few more slides to give you. So thanks, thanks again for, along with the special services department to come and talk about this going down the other part, if we were just going to use July, and upon that presentation, I said I would be more than willing to come back each month and talk about special education, and it's so rewarding to get to be in front of you and talk about what's going on. But if you want to start, I mean, I think, and see if we can start with an explanation of what's happening with the literacy.
Sure, U5 stands for University of Florida, Florida Literacy Instruction, and we are very, very excited about this, as Brenda said. It has been very well received by all teachers, it is very, it doesn't require a lot of preparation for teachers, and Laura doesn't require a lot of training. It's somewhat intuitive, it follows the science of reading, and so it just seems very well-aligned. Another reason we're excited about it is because it doesn't require us to bring in trainers, like you have to do in writing a new curriculum. So all the resources are online and readily available to teachers if they're planning at midnight, or four o'clock in the morning, or three o'clock in the afternoon. Those resources are available to them. And it's, it's very well presented, and so it is scripted, and so the teachers can follow it, so we're very excited about that. We're monitor, I'm sorry, we're mirroring the work in general ed, in special ed with the reading efforts. We're focusing in K1 and 2 with our readers, our emergent readers and our non-readers, and we feel like U5 is the right instructional tool to help us really raise those scores and really get our students to a better level of reading proficiency, so that they can go into those curriculums like hundreds and task force that we use.
So I have to lift up Laura in all the different projects, but not only the literacy project, three separately recorded, not a 100% certified staffing. I'm in my 31st year with those schools, we have never been fully staffed, especially because special education at times has got some really hard to fill positions, so I'm so pleased with that statistic right now. We do have some young ladies that are going to have babies, so we'll have to find some long-term subs, but we can handle that. We've never been fully staffed like we are now, so that's really rewarding. Yet again, a major part of that is Laura and her diligence with attending to our postings, working closely with HR, make sure we get some interviews often and early, so we get these quality candidates, and we were seeing high-quality candidates even late in the August years, August dates, when years past, we've had less than desirable applicants in the game, so please do the hiring process. So celebration, bullet point number two is about the supervising positions that have been transforming in our departments, and we've had several high-quality individuals that have accepted supervising positions. And just a reminder, we talked a little bit about this in July, that adding responsibilities to those positions will include some oversight, accountability, and supervision of staff. It will be of the special services department, a lot more room somewhere else to help building administrative at their sites, and first and foremost, to provide training and guidance that's needed so often in special education. Laura, do you have anything, or keep going? Okay. Bullet point number three is, we have the comprehensive plan to continue training in our department, especially related to due process training, making sure that people understand their roles and responsibilities, and especially, as Brenda highlighted, in our needs of areas of improvement in special education instruction, being able to support case managers of more relevant, right goals that target the data they need to focus on to make improvements for kids. That's one of our major projects this year in special education department. And lastly, focus on the MTSS process to ensure students are our tier 1 and 2 supports and general education supports, when necessary, but really focusing on helping tier 1 and 2 before you get to special education, make improvements for kids, so that the high qualification rates that's happening right now in the little schools, maybe has a slight turnaround, maybe you have less students qualifying for special education, that would be a good thing. Our percentage, I think we reported in July, was near 21% of students in little schools qualifying for services. That's a, that's a high number to report for our district. Statewide is around 15%, so we're looking to reduce that total number of kids qualifying for IBs. Lastly, it's not on there, but we have a successful start to our STEPS program, the success through Harvard and positive supports. We are running the two classrooms, the secondary room is full, or with, is it eight students? Seven students? Eight. Eight students. And we do have around three students in elementary right now, so working through those referrals, and we have a successful start to the meeting with the STEPS programs as well, you hear about that.
Because of time, I won't go deep into this, but I also want to make sure everyone's making connection between the data that was just presented that indicated that we have a significant number of students with special needs who are not achieving at the levels we would like, we have schools that have been, that have been identified in that area. And so, the special education department has been working diligently to put additional efforts and training in place to improve outcomes for kids, and that's what the hope is. And again, we also indicated that in a number of areas, we are also not where we want to be related to reading. And so, Brenda has shared how we as a district are striving to, again, embed additional strategies to improve outcomes for students. Now, I won't do that, everything that we're going to do, but I just want to make sure that everyone's making a connection between the data that was presented and the targeted efforts that we are implementing to make improvements, because again, we want to make sure all of our students are successful.
I also know that we're covering a lot tonight, and appreciate the dedication and time that people put into all your presentations. I also appreciate the, you know, these efforts and the efforts of the board for listening. Also, you might find with the, with the agenda, you'll see that we're beginning to use each of our three main strategic areas of supporting every student, advancing equity, and improving systems, and in many ways, this, this addresses all three. It's about how are we improving our systems so that we can support every student and have equitable outcomes for our students. So it's really important work, and really appreciate you putting that through line between, these were our results, and this is what we're doing by them.
Thank you. Next slide.
So that is the perfect segue in the kind of setting up for this slide. So a lot of Jake and I's work is more on the social, emotional, amount health side of things, we talked a lot today about kind of that academic MTSS side, but a lot of the work that we're going to be sharing about is more of those social, emotional behavioral systems and supports that we're trying to put in place for our district. Last year, as a district, we participated in Minnesota MTSS cohort training, and so I think that's important to mention here and at least highlight, because that really centers the framework of what we're kind of using as our guiding, guiding social, C5 fundamental components when we're thinking about what are we striving to improve. And so, as a district, these five components here are what we're really working on in our work. Last school year, we hired 13 social, emotional behavioral MTSS coordinators, who we had not hired for every school in elementary, middle school, and high school. Those coordinators met with Jake and myself five-weekly throughout the course of the entire school year, we also have a lot of support from Tom and Lake as well in that process, to really ensure that we are providing them guidance, coaching, and training to be able to move some of these efforts forward in our school sites. And so, each school at that point also ended up forming a MTSS team if they did not already have a pre-existing PBIS team. And so, the goals of that team were very similar to what PBIS teams would do, and basically, in those meetings, we were providing them with guidance around how to improve data practices, how to improve behavior response strategies to include more restorative practice work, how to improve systems aspects that were really fundamental and important, such as universal expectations and positive reinforcement strategies, and all of those key things that are essential to the work. Heavy emphasis last year is placed on tier one strategies, where we've been with all students across our schools, but also we started introducing some tier two strategies as well, and we'll continue to be striving towards that this whole year, I'll highlight a little bit more of the tier two aspects later in the presentation. We also provided, Project WARE has been amazing for us in that it's a lot, it's a lot of opportunity that I would say you otherwise wouldn't have had. It provided us the opportunity to provide stipends to incentivize our PBIS teams to grow, and have some consistency, it's provided us with a lot of other opportunities as well, which I'll talk about in a little bit here. Last year, through this work of our PBIS MTSS coordinators that we were meeting with and their PBIS teams, all schools basically ended up applying to become PBIS schools. And so, those schools that hadn't historically been PBIS schools now went accepted, and so I can say, that's really exciting to say we're going to now be the PBIS district as a school district this year. Jake's going to talk a little bit more about what that means and what that looks like for us moving into the school year.
Thanks, Jen. So yes, PBIS is, I think if you asked me when I got married three years ago, we would be, we're wrapped right now of going through PBIS cohort training, having a bona fide, it's all. social emotional learning curriculum. This is named staff in our PBIS, I would probably just give out my salary to say we've been there. So this is a pretty large and monumentous moment this year, it will be for us. And so we've been stuck at six schools that have been PBIS for a very long time, seven, eight, nine years. And that really doesn't provide consistency. We have some schools tracking data really well, we have some schools that have never tracked behavioral data. And so through last year of these MTSS coordinators, we were finally able to say for the first time ever that all schools tracked behavioral data. And that may seem like, okay, but it does take a system, it gets all staff bought in that they're going to fill out these forms, that we're going to track it, and that we're going to use it. Because if staff don't see that we're using this data appropriately, then why would they follow through with the process we're asking them to? So a couple of things with people at PBIS, positive behavioral interventions and supports is, we are working with MDE, especially Aaron Ignis, who's kind of our rep of the northern region. And at the end of this month, we will be doing a full day refresher for all the six schools that have all the PBIS. And why this is big is because those teams have had a lot of turnover. And so the original trained staff may no longer even be in that building. And so this is something that they've been asking for for a long time, super happy for that. Just posting for subs today, so I'm super excited to get that movement. The other part is a bit larger cohort training. This is a super large commitment. That's our other seven traditional schools. That, for us, because we're Duluth, or because we have seven, they come to us, so that saves us a ton of money in terms of transportation, hotels, and food. Then it goes from nine days to five days. So it's going to be five days of training, about one day a month, all the way through February. Again, we're looking that we'll probably have between 35 and 50 people at that. So that is a huge commitment, super excited to be at this point with us. And we're just going through, Aaron Ignis yesterday, about what this training can be learning in a Duluth-specific. So we're really blessed to have that. Just in preparation for this, and the length of hour of last school year, we were able to put together asynchronous bus training, APSC relation, restorative practices, positive behavioral interventions. And why we did asynchronous is because we're going to be hiring bus drivers all year long. And so this work with Jeremy Caspides, who is the manager over there, is going to allow us to make that a mandatory thing as you get hired for the bus driving. And so we're also able to replace the lives with families in transition, because that is such a specific population that we have to really handle and care. And it was really great to just provide that, and hopefully for the next few years, I'll be up on my training. The other thing that I think is one of the best parts of all this is, we stopped the trend of having people do work for no one. We are able to provide stipends for all these PBIS team members. Doesn't matter if you're a very professional or a teacher, you receive a stipend to help improve these systems. And a big part of this is improving school climate, which is really great. The last thing I just want to say with PBIS real quick is, we're collecting a lot more data than we ever have. And one of those is the client surveys, that's given to families, that's given to students, and that's given to staff. And that's the way you're really judged, do kids feel safe in their abilities? Do staff members feel like their administrators have their back? Do parents feel like there's good communications from school? Those are just kind of some examples there. And so it really allows us to set goals to improve our school climates through those surveys. We will be doing that again this year, twice a year, so hope it's. Social emotional learning, I think one of our kind of embedded successes now, I know the workload for me has gone down because it's becoming a way of life, which is very wonderful. And so we're in our third year of this. Last year, we raised our goal to be 85%. Elementary crushed that, and middle school just barely made it. And so that, to me, is our completion data, that means that, you know, 92% of those are getting in front of all elementary kids. And that's a really, really great thing, and we're hoping to stay at those percentages for this year. Shout out to Site Champions who push the work at every second. Again, a site in position to help lead the work, which I think is a big reason why we get successful. We have bought additional posters for all schools, including Spanish-language posters, so that's kind of cool, not just for Lowell, but for all of our schools. Staff lanyards, like I'm wearing here. And then we're also able to buy bullying prevention kits for all schools, as well as after-school time for Key Zone. And so we had some extra funds through Aware, and so those won't be embedded this year, but this will be our year to figure out how we're going to use those and use them really well. Also purchased a social emotional learning curriculum for East High School, it's called Base Education, and we're just getting into what that implementation process can hopefully. Buying is a really tricky thing, and so you have to do it right, or you'll never get back. And so that's kind of our goal right now, is to figure out how we want to implement that at our brighter school, and make sure that that is accessible for those high schoolers.
Yeah, and so that license was purchased for three years, so that's really exciting that we know how that went forward and had an opportunity like that for East High School. Kind of transitioning into restorative practices, and so restorative practices was fairly new here as a district up until about two years ago, when we started having more offerings of trainings for staff. Lincoln was on a little bit of a different trajectory with that, having started this several years ago, and having more of their staff trained. At this point, it's really exciting to say that all of our Dean, social workers, counselors, integration specialists, American Indian homeschool liaisons, school psychologists have had training. We've also had optional offerings for teachers, which we've had a lot of teacher attendance as well last year, and will continue to offer more of those optional offerings for teachers this year as well for circle training. We did restorative foundational training last year, and just kind of broad overviews of how, what it looks like, how to use restorative language. So all staff had that training last school year, and in December, we're going to be doing some follow-up training during PD date for all staff as well on that. Also, in the spring, we had all of our district administrators, principals, and leadership trained in the fundamentals of restorative practices, and so we can all kind of have some common understanding around that work. And then through the Aware, we also had some extra funds, which was really exciting to be able to purchase circle forward books, which are just an amazing resource in how to conduct circles and utilize the circle process in RP in schools. And so we provided those books to all school sites for this school year. One thing else, just to mention related to RP, is really this is a journey, and of course it has to live beyond training. And so one of the things we have had all school sites do is make sure that they are incorporating this in that their behavior response plan. So after an incident happens with a student, what are you doing to respond in a meaningful manner, using these restorative practices that they now are equipped with and trained as an alternative to things like suspension? Also utilizing this more in our reentry process, so if a suspension is necessary, what are we doing to circle kids up and have the right conversations to repair harm and do that work with students, families, and staff when that's necessary? We also had some work around RP last year, specific to staff conflict. I would say I've seen more staff conflict last year than I've seen historically, and so trying to support with that has been something that we've been also trying to do, and we partnered with Pipples and been working on some of that work, which is a bit nice to have as an offering. I'll move to the next to the next slide. So other MTSS efforts that we've been working on, we're continuing to develop our handbook. We consider that an evolving working dock that really drives our social-emotional behavioral MTSS systems and framework here, and so that is something that we're continuing to develop. What we did this year is basically created a three-page quick handout version of that for sites, and we gave it to our MTSS coordinators during the first week of school, so that they had that resource for their teams to guide them through how to conduct tier-two interventions. We're also going to be providing them with more specific training on how to deliver those interventions in the coming months, so they have a little more expertise around how to deliver those interventions, what they look like, where they can access the materials that they need, so we can start embedding more tier-two social-emotional behavioral practices at our sites. Tier-two is very new in our district on the social-emotional side of things, there really hasn't been a lot of guidance in that, and so it's led to some of our buildings kind of doing their own thing, and so we're really trying to ring that back in and have some alignment in terms of what do those interventions look like across the board. One of the things that we did in order to do that is through Project Where, we were able to purchase tier-two ECL curriculum, and so that is new for schools this year. It was disseminated to sites. We're going to be offering training to all our on-the-trees, to those folks that run our tier-two social-emotional behavioral intervention, which usually consists of gen ed, social workers, some of our MTSS coordinators, and one of the counselors. And they will have an opportunity to participate in a social thinking training. A Project Where we'll also be funding, which is super nice. We also purchased training, or curriculum for high schools as well, that we'll be looking at and moving into. Project Where will continue for the next three school years, including this year, and through that, there are requirements of that grant that we are expected to also complete. One of those things is youth mental health first aid training, so Jake and I are training the trainers for that, are trainers for that, we're trained through the train-to-trainer model. And so we are offering three-year trainings each year, we started doing those two years ago. And then we also are going to be offering some other events. Last year, in May, we operated mental health awareness event, where we had basically lesson plans sent out to each elementary and high school and old school during, every week in May, and so we were able to conduct those lessons specific to mental health awareness with students. We also sent out newsletters, there was a mental health newsletter that was sent out weekly, that followed some MDE guidance in terms of how we wanted to bring that language to support our students and families, and just some helpful resources. We also utilized the mental health awareness event in May to also promote the new 988 crisis line number for suicide and mental health prevention, and so it can replace 911 in the case of mental health crisis. And so that is something that we also have, we have received posters on, and we've sent around to our school sites, so they have those posted in the buildings. And so we'll continue, of course, to do more mental health awareness work this school year as well. Other things out listed on here, of course, there's a lot specific to mental health partnerships and what we're doing to expand those as well. There's a lot of work around that happening. This year, we actually were able to partner with one of our mental health agencies to be able to bring in more pre-k mental health support to some of our school sites, that's been an area of need, and unfortunately, a shortage in the mental health community. It's really hard to get that training, but they sent a couple extra people to train and be able to offer us more of that support to some of our schools, so that is really a huge excitement. We also expanded CTSS, which is mental health practice share services, in a few of our schools this year as well, in addition to the therapy providers that are already in those sites, to be able to bring more support to kids, to have more intensive help service that need that skill. Again, there's just a lot of moving pieces, and I'd probably have to talk for hours. If you have any questions, we're always happy to answer.
Thank you, Kelly and Jake. And so again, making that connection, when we talk about how do we go about pushing a positive learning environment in our schools, it's through our PBIS process. How are we going to make sure we work with kids differently and not in a punitive way? It's by chasing and implementing restorative practices in our schools and things that, again, that are less punitive in nature and more supportive to kids, and working with, you know, Kelly and as she's indicated, our community partners on providing mental health services for our students. So these are, again, are all the different ways we are approaching making improvements in our schools and with our students. The next slide, sorry, remember Sidoski? I don't have my glasses on, so.
Oh, no, that's okay, thank you. I just want to lay back in what you've done, I'm really almost just, it's so important for our students to have these resources. I remember you spoke to the board media this time last year, and you talked about the award grant, and so I'm just wondering about the timeline of that. This is so important, it needs to be a priority for our students and our families. What does that look like? Can you remind me of the timeline of that grant? Can we reapply again?
Yeah, so it's a five-year grant that was awarded through SAMSSA, but provided to MDE, and so MDE awarded us essentially with it. It's five years, this is year thirteen, so we'll have two years after this, $375,000 a year. If we don't spend some, we can carry it over a portion into the year after, which is really nice, but yeah, and that kind of fit the year. So that funding is paying for my position, it's also paying for another ECL interventionist at the district level that's providing tier-two support, and for our elementary schools that have historically been lacking any type of gen ed, social work, or counseling support, and also providing some support around MTSS and how to develop those tier-two systems and structures at those sites as well. In addition, of course, to the funding that we've utilized to purchase the supplies we've needed, like calming kits, this year we purchased extra calming kits to replace the ones that maybe went missing or broken, or for the staff that came on board. So it's just been great to have those options for our students, so.
Thank you so much for the work that you do, and you're definitely making amazing use of this grant, so thank you. I have a lot of a follow-up question to a bullying prevention kit, what does that look like?
Yeah, so it's five kind of units, and it doesn't go with the digital, but it's separate on its own. And so we had one school piloted last year as Congdon, they bought it with their own funds, and what they did is they went through Unit One, which got them to mid-October, October is bullying prevention month, then they went into the lessons with bullying prevention. And it's just runs just like Second Step, where you have a lesson plan, takes very, very minimal prep, and then it's grade-specific, so kindergarten has their own, fifth grade has their own, it is elementary-specific. But Kenny said, we learned a lot through Congdon, and they had a lot of success with it, so I'm hoping that we can just embed it as a common practice moving forward. And thanks for always being such a support, appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree with Members Sidoski, just incredible work that you have been doing, and this grant has given us so much, so thank you for really using it in so many ways. I just had kind of a couple of questions about how are we letting parents know about this additional support that are there, particularly with staff, in having the staff to work with the kids? I mean, how do we get that message out to parents? How have you been? So that, one of my questions, and then, yeah.
I can answer a little bit, but we do have a mental health page on our website, and our website is so much more user-friendly, you don't have to Google what you're looking for, you can actually find it on the website, so that's cool. And that, we keep up to date with all staff that are there, including community partners that are at those buildings. So we're really hoping that when people are wanting help, and if we haven't identified a student that maybe needs additional help, that they can work through our support staff that we have already there, whether that's a social worker or counselor, to help be that bridge to a community provider. So I guess that's kind of where we're going so far, is with our website, and then those relationships that are made at the site level.
And some of that work also, I would say, actually happens within the PBIS teams at that site level, they're communicating some of that work out. I can think of, for example, Lincoln Park and what they've done to promote restorative practices in their building. And so I think it kind of varies a little bit by site and what makes the most sense for their school. I know their Facebook pages and websites and stuff like that bring some of that work to light. Thank you. Where was I going with this? So I think some of that kind of is naturally evolving. We also created a mental health advisory committee last year that I oversaw, that actually was really helpful when it came to some planning around the mental health awareness event that we had in May, but will continue to have it throughout the course of this school year, and kind of continue to get that parent voice and representation and whatnot, to give their perspectives to.
Mr. Magus?
One of the both of these, I just want to say thank you for the work that's been done. When we listen to this, the many, many, many things being done, I'm reminded of the people saying, you know, how do you eat an elephant, you know, one bite at a time? We have been doing so much work as a district, and you, especially as a team. You know, one bite at a time. We have been doing so much work as a district and you, especially as a team, in each of these areas. And one thing I'm struck with too is the work we're doing to get information out related to our referendum, the upcoming referendum for future board 709. Because a lot of the, a lot of the resources that we have to do some of this work were provided through our ESR funding. And that funding is coming to an end. And so we need to make sure that we have the support certificates so that we can continue this vital work for our strategic plan so that we can meet the needs of each and every student. So that's another way that we're trying to get the message out about what we're doing here as a district. It is through that referendum work. And it's important for us to make sure that we're telling these vital stories about how this is impacting our kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly and Jake. All right, so I will quickly share. Benice Quay, Edie Washington, was unfortunately, she was not able to stay. She was here earlier and she was going to present. And yeah, as you know, the nice game along and she had another commitment. But I will share some of the highlights because, again, throughout the year, we'll be coming back and sharing some additional information. So again, we have different departments also have a significant grant that they oversee. And that's the American Indian Education Program that she oversees and has a budget that is associated with it. With those resources, she has staff and there are some opportunities that they provide students, especially specifically for American Indian students. Academic mentoring, homework mentoring is part of that, or monitoring is part of that. Graduation credit monitoring, promoting positive educational climate for students, working with students, staff in a variety of ways to ensure success. They put on a number of cultural activities for students and families throughout the community. This is with the development of curriculum for cultural lessons and so forth. And they also, again, provide a lot of education to our community related to American Indian language, history, and culture. I'm guessing that's from the one. Moving forward. This year, that's a change that has happened in the programming as a way to improve opportunities for students is all of the American Indian Education homeschool liaisons have now been trained, received training as Check and Connect mentors. So as you know, we implement Check and Connect in our school district. We have a separate funding source that is supporting our Check and Connect mentors. But now to expand more mentoring opportunities for students, we have expanded that to our American Indian Education homeschool liaisons, as well as our integration specialists have all been trained as well. So that's going to provide, again, a number of opportunities for students to receive some mentoring. So we're happy about that change in practice. And of course, we have implemented in SummerCon, Go Jibway Emergent Programming, K5. We have five American Indian homeschool liaisons. And again, we provide mentoring for the Jibway Language Teachers and Programming. And again, a number of family engagement opportunities. The Office of Education Equity, unfortunately, Mr. Smith is one of the individuals who unfortunately lost his family member unexpectedly. And so, again, prayers out to his family. And so I want to cover some of the programming efforts that he has oversight for, improving outcomes for all students, especially students who are marginalized. And that's what the Achievement Integration Dollars are meant to serve and support. So under his program, he has a number of individuals that fund support. They are called Integration Specialists. So there are twelve integration specialists throughout the district. They provide mentoring and support for students throughout our schools. They do a lot of family engagement. As a matter of fact, the Integration Specialists in American Indian Education homeschool liaison, they're some individuals who have some of the most contact and really deep relationships with students and families in those areas that they serve, whether African-American students and/or American Indian students. They provide foster development opportunities. The Jibway Emergent Class Room Assistant is also funded by this programming. The Office Specialist is also funded. And again, they provide a number of classes for Indigenous culture enrichment programming. They offer the Scholars Program, which has started some years ago, but that still will be offered in effect. Again, they provide a number of opportunities to address social-emotional needs of students, offer after-school programming in a variety of buildings. They provide licensed teachers who provide interventions and support. They provide additional resources for sites for, again, interventions and other enrichment opportunities. And they take students on learning experiences and field trips and outings. And so there are a number of opportunities and significant work that is being provided with these resources. And at a future date, Ms. Smith will be here as our coordinator to provide some additional information upon that. Any questions related to the programs?
I'm really struggling to follow because I understand the Check and Connect program and it was working when I was still, was still teaching. But how is, how are our, so our interventionists are trained? And so are our homebound, our home, homebound instructions?
American Indian.
American Indian homebound. So if, but our, our Check and Connect staff has a role, you know, of tutoring and helping and individualized. And then our integrationists and our homebound instructors, they have, don't they have their own curric, their own? Like, how can we call them Check and Connect mentors when they've been mentoring in their role for their whole career?
So what has been agreed upon is that Check and Connect is a proven strategy and approach for meeting the needs of students. And so, so that's why we have moved in this direction. A little bit of history too. Several years ago, and I think to testify against the attestant is that integration specialists were trained as Check and Connect mentors previously. But that changed, that role changed, and that training changed. So now we're just circling back to what has been proven to be successful. And again, this will give us an opportunity to provide significant number of students, Black and Brown students, with mentoring that has been proven to be impactful, to improve outcomes. So and that's the goal of adding these additional trained individuals into that pool of mentors now called Check and Connect mentor. Now, really, still have some work that they have to work on? Absolutely. So not every homeschool liaison is going to be a mentor. Not every integration specialist may be a mentor, but they always receive the training. But now that, again, that gives us a number of additional adults who can now serve as mentors using that strategy and training provided through Check and Connect.
What's next, Sidoski?
Never said anything? Yeah, I was just gonna add, again, I don't want to say overwhelmed, but I'm just, I'm impressed with everything that's going on here. And I guess one of the ways I look at it too is like, we've piloted so many good programs from Check and Connect and MTSS and I could just keep going on the list of things that we've, you know, used across our schools, across the district. And I can't think of a better way of saying it, but we're going all in in a more dedicated way. And that's, that's kind of what I feel is going on here. It's like we're really taking those proven strategies and programs that, you know, we've kind of tested the waters in, whether it was Linkin Park or another building. And we're saying, you know, these strategies have worked for students. And we've got to expand them across the district and find just more ways to use these successful strategies along with some new ones that, we're, Project Aware is something different. You know, so we've added, you know, again, more tools and toolkits or programs to disperse across the district. And just really kind of, because we have to go all in in a dedicated way to, you know, try to make these improvements and.
Thank you for sharing, because that's exactly what we're trying to do. We're trying to, we're making sure to reiterate our efforts. We are making sure that we narrow focus, or focus, to do exactly what you just shared, to make sure that we have the resources, whether it's human resources or fiscal resources, and go all in, as you indicated. All those tried and true strategies, all those strategies that have been proven for research to be impactful, improve an outcome. So that's exactly what we're doing. We're trying to narrow the focus, add alignment, and make sure that it's offered district-wide. And those strategies are district-wide efforts now. Remember Yoffrey Kemp?
Yeah, I just, this has been a great presentation, just so much good information. There were so many thoughts as each of you have been presenting. But I think the theme that I really appreciated is that the training, consistent training with staff, with all kinds of staff across our district. And that emphasis on that and that we're providing that, again, that consistent training, which will help the kids, which will help the families, which if there's consistency with our schools, obviously each school is unique and things like that. But that's really been impressive hearing from all of you tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we're not done yet. So just a few more slides.
I'm gonna go really quick. So in preschool, I just wanted to continue with the alignment mentality here. So we have been implementing the Pyramid Model for the last nine years. Pyramid Model is the preschool version of PBIS. It was originally brought to our programs through Really Challenged Special Ed and has been recognized by the governor as a high-quality fidelity, met-fidelity with our implementation. So this year, we have received some Tier two funding to support our ongoing Pyramid Training and Coaching with the idea that it's possible that some kindergarten teachers might appreciate the Pyramid Model versus PBIS. There are some components to it that are geared towards younger learners. We also have been implementing Second Step lessons for a while. But this summer, we had teachers align the lessons with the, the way the Pyramid Model rolls out. So taking the Second Step lessons out of order and putting it, aligning it with the Pyramid Model implementation. So a lot of work goes into that, tying those two things together. We are also looking at strong Tier two social-emotional interventions. So our mental health coordinator has been working hard to find tools to use to help us really get some strong Tier two social-emotional interventions in place. We're happy and excited to have the P3 team back in session so that we can do some vertical alignment with kindergarten for seeing those transitions into kindergarten. And we have spent the last three years training all of our staff on Circle of Security, which is a research-based parent ed curriculum that's based on attachment theory. But it has a classroom model, which that model says that young children need to feel connected to their teacher. And if you look at your connection with your students in much the same way that we feel connected to our children, there's a Circle of Security Classroom, Tier two model that we are interested in implementing in our programs, which includes coaching. And so it's very exciting. It took a lot of preparation, professional development for us to get to the spot where we are ready to pilot Circle of Security Classroom to classrooms. So it's a lot of effort to get to this spot. There is a link here if you're interested in learning more about that. There's a link at the bottom, Circle of Security Classroom. I think some of you are familiar with it, but I know. So this is our alignment.
Thank you. Questions for the team?
Is the Circle of Security in the ECFP program right now? Is that where I know that I have connections with?
It's existed in this district for a long time, back when Central High School was here and they had the Habitat Program. Circle of Security was very much a part of that program. And so we have done it for quite a few years in pockets all around the district.
I want to thank the team again for sticking, sticking. They're working hard and I hope you get a sense of that. And I appreciate the sentiment about listening in here and the brilliant efforts and the concentration of, again, resources. Because that's what we're trying to do. We know, again, that the data isn't where we want it to be. And we're working really hard as a district to make sure we align our efforts for our strategic plan throughout our organization. And we want to make sure that, you know, that we're full aware and, again, we're committed to making things better for our kids in this community. So, so thank you, team.
Good night.
You want to cheer?
Good night. Good night, good night.
I would ask for some direction at this point in time, given the time. We have a couple of additional items. So I want to see, I would ask that we can, I'll provide an additional update at a later, at a future meeting related to the concurrence and non-concurrence. I would ask that we table that item now. And it looks like the only remaining item is improving system and enhancing more communication with the public. So I'll figure a lead on that.
So it sounds fancier than it really intended to be. And it came out of our agenda-setting meeting with Powell. But just sometimes when, especially when I have my weekly meeting with Superintendent Magus, I tend to just assume we can go to something that we have talked about at the board level. And then Superintendent Magus will sometimes say, well, you know, do you have, do we have the board approval? And one of those is the workbook that we've talked about and that we've done some copies of. So before we go forward with creating that, I just wanted to double-check to make sure that was still something that we would want to do. And that I had, I had really reached out to Member Lottler Kemp. And again, I just wanted to make the board aware that that's, that's what I'm hoping we can go forward with. We've talked about it before. The other, so, and the other thing was that we are still working on our ability to visit elementary schools in October. And I have some dates and I'll work with Executive Secretary Paquette to kind of alert principals. And then we can kind of try to schedule a few of them. The intent is, I know that board members are not going to be able to visit all nine sites in October and then the residential's and the middle schools and high schools in that month of November. So you can give me some better direction on if that is something you still want to pursue, is visiting. And the last one was that we talked about doing a little bit of a recap on what we've done at a school board meeting. That was something that Rochester School does, that they have their members after a meeting, not like a Cal meeting, but a regular school board meeting, would do a two-minute video that they put on their website with what was just enacted at that school website. So before I go any further with moving ahead on that, I just wanted to share those kinds of opportunities. Again, the handbook, the visits to our schools, and the opportunity for a school board member to give a brief two-minute recap for our public to see what we did at the board meeting. I don't think we've had a long discussion. I just wanted to show that if there's any concerns or ideas, you can.
I guess I'll jump in. You know, I think at the last retreat, we did talk about the handbook and I think there was an agreement at the retreat about the handbook. And I think that it's something that we're just kind of revisiting it before much more work happens on it. And I think at the retreat, we also talked about setting up those potential meetings in October and a couple of times in the fall and in the spring. And there was, seemed to be consensus there. So I'm glad if there still is agreement that we move forward with that. I guess in terms of kind of recapping after boarding, I don't, you know, I know that's been floating around, but I would rather us have at a retreat more of a comprehensive kind of discussion on ways that board members are going to communicate, whether it's something like that or other ways. And I don't feel like we really have that discussion rather than do some piecemeal things. So I would, and I don't feel comfortable moving forward with that because we're missing three board members as well. So.
And I appreciate that too because at our workshop the last time with the handbook and the visiting of the schools, we were also missing some board members and maybe the same ones, I don't know. But again, I guess the bigger part of the handbook. But again, I guess the bigger part of the handbook is that I have, um, worked with Member Lottler Kemp on that and that I think I would think we're gonna move forward and do some work on that handbook and bring it back, um, with the goal of trying to have a handbook done by the end of Dec-December. So that was kind of good. And I know, um, there are times when, you know, I don't know where you have a conversation with all board members when it's just a board ask. I'm just asking about going forward with the handbook and instead, I, I don't know how else to do that other than put an, an item on the agenda that just says, I'm gonna update you or I would like to update you on some, on some things we've talked about. And, and again, it's, it was really about the fact that I, I wanted the board to know that I was referring to Member Lottler Kemp to work with me on that handbook. And we're gonna work on it together.
I have, um, a follow-up question, I guess. Definitely, I'm in support of the board handbook. Um, when do you think you would have a draft for the board? Um, could you have a draft done before our next board work session? So we could have time to read it and maybe dive in? That was just an idea. Um, and then I like Member Lottler Kemp's idea about a broader kind of conversation about board communications. However, I also really do like the idea. I watched some of those videos from Rochester. Right, Member? Yeah. Um, and I thought that they were really great. And then, um, what do we hear? We just want to make sure that we're as transparent as we can. And I think that's another tool that we can use to update the community. And what is the middle one?
School visits?
Oh, school visits. Looking forward to those. Um, the sooner they're on our calendar, the better, especially for those having a full-time job. Thank you.
I was thinking about the school visits as we're talking and we've also had conversations about when we're working to try and get information out about the referendum. Uh, there's gonna be ample opportunity there to, like, how do we, how do we consolidate what we're doing so that we can focus on that, that for the next, uh, few weeks? Uh, we will be setting up meetings with, uh, each of the schools to, to share with the staff what it is that's proposed for the referendum. Maybe that would be a good opportunity to, I mean, I know it's, it's a little bit more focused and a little less open, but it might give opportunity for board members to, to, uh, be part of those as well. So that would be an opportunity where we could put a list of when we're visiting different schools and the board members could sign up for, for that opportunity as well. I know that doesn't completely meet the purpose of what we were thinking of, but just about.
Well, thank you. I'll just respond to Members Zdowski. One, that workshop on October twenty-sixth is, um, tentatively, we've pulled that off because we are going to try to do our MSVA. I think we got a, a Google for a potential date or so. We're gonna do that MSVA self-evaluation later. We're not gonna do it on the twenty-sixth because we're really trying to focus on the referendum and maybe wait through the, you know, um, through the election cycle too. So I was really, you know, um, the timeline for that handbook would probably be somewhere between, you know, November to December is probably where I'm thinking we're gonna work on it. Again, there's not a hard deadline that it's done, you know, January first, but it's, it's, I, I feel we've, we've, we've reviewed some handbooks. We know what needs to go in and it's probably not gonna take that long. And I think that, um, we can even share some rough drafts, you know, some of the ones we're wanting to. But trying to be conscious of the fact that, in fact, I just had this conversation with Superintendent Magus where just really, even as a board chair, trying to focus and not draw our leadership too far out of, of the need for them to be focused on their job of, of getting information out to our communities as well. So, and but probably more near December.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah?
Thank you. That's all of that.
Thank you. That concludes our Cal meeting agenda for the day.
It does.